I call this meeting of the council to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, so everybody's here even though doesn't ever Snipper, doesn't look like he's here. I'll just point out that for anybody who picked up the physical packet, the agenda on the top of that one was wrong, but you have a correct one at your place. If you have the online version, it was correct from the beginning. And what that did was give you an additional annexation resolution that was not on that original agenda. So there are two annexation resolutions rather than one. And just in terms of a scheduling update, just wanted to remind people that this Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th, the city offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. And then we have one more meeting after the holiday weekend next Monday, November 29th. And that will be our only additional remaining meeting before we go on break in December. And we will be having a, potentially, a special session item on any comments we want to make on amendments to the CR Zone. And we will have the continuation of this evening's discussion about the recommendations of the task force on environmental action. This evening, we'll continue to go through the staff recommendations. And then next week, we have promised the task force members that they will have an opportunity to talk with us. And the council recess starts after next Monday, the 29th, and goes through January 2nd. And the first meeting of the new year is on Monday, January 3rd. We now have the opportunity for public comment, if anybody would like to comment on anything that's not on our regular meeting agenda. So if you're commenting on anything that's a work session item this evening, or anything that's not on the regular meeting agenda. And we'll hear from Mr. Lovelace first, and then I know Mr. Mack has something he wants to say, and maybe Ms. Burkhama as well.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4, your favorite beach delegate. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. I want to thank Terry Siemens for bringing me over to the dedication of Bell Ziegler Park. And I noticed a couple of meetings ago that the city council was kept referring to as Jackie A. Park. And I wanted to see if people can be conscious of it, that now it is now Bell Ziegler Park. And I wonder how long it's going to be before people start calling it BZ Park, their initials? You know, because of the way it sounds, you know, catchy and all that, you know, kids like a catchy abbreviation and all that, you know, nowadays. Everything's abbreviated or given off in, you know, in code, or whatever it is you want to call it. And I wonder how long it's going to be before people start calling it BZ Park. I went, I took my girlfriend over to BZ Park to play frisbee. I want to take my dog over to walk in BZ Park. You know, I'll be over there if you look, if I'll be, you know what I mean? And how many times, kids are going to be that. But anyway, that's one thing I want to thank everybody for, and I was, I wish I could have seen a lot more people out there, but I was very grateful to see the people we had out there. You know, and when the city does a dedication like this, I hope that the people who are watching out there and the people who come to meetings would like to come out to these things. The second thing I'd want to do is bring up the fact that I was coming into this meeting tonight, and there's another speed bump right here, right, as we come into that meeting. The threshold on one of these doors is so high, it jars my back every time I come into there, and those vertebrae don't like it, they complain. You know, I get pain in them when you go over there. So I wonder why they made the threshold so high? You know, I mean, I don't think they're trying to outdo Maple Avenue, I hope they're not. But coming in that thing is very difficult in a wheelchair, and it's difficult for somebody to push someone in a wheelchair over that. And I was wondering if they could somehow shave that speed bump down, because that one is a killer. I mean, I go over that thing and it hurts. But I'm still going to come to meetings, I'm not going to give my meeting up, but I'd like to see that shaved down for me and other people who have got disabilities, or who are differently able. And another thing I want to do is wish you people a very good Thanksgiving weekend, and also I want to tell you people, this is a bad time of year to act like a turkey. So I want to keep you people on the council, keep on your toes, and to continue to think of making my city a better city for people to live in. Because Tacoma Park is a leader in our country. So remember, don't act like a turkey. You guys have got responsibilities. And you know what happens to turkeys at this time of year, don't you?
Gobble, gobble.
Gobble, no, come on, who is that, mayor or what? Come on. I want to also tell everybody that thank you very much. Bye-bye. Keep the peace. Happy Thanksgiving. See you next year.
And I'll apologize to the people who are sitting there waiting to speak at the podium. I was still working off the old agenda that I was telling people not to work off of, and it didn't have the proclamation that I had given you all before the meeting, which is a proclamation declaring this Saturday Small Business Saturday. So I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of it. And it's, the 27th of November is Small Business Saturday, and I think some people wanted to speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, the Tacoma-Lincoln crossroads area thanks you for your consideration about encouraging people to shop at home. We appreciate that because there are such a diversity of items available to the community in the crossroads that they sometimes drive past to go to more selective areas. Yet we would not in any sense wish any less than the good fortune to Old Town. And so I defer to my colleague in Old Town to also express appreciation.
The businesses of Old Town Tacoma Park would also like to thank Mr. Mayor and the council for declaring this Saturday Small Business Saturday. American Express is answered to Black Friday and Cyber Monday. Something else of note is that for everybody who is on Facebook, or knows people who are on Facebook, for everybody who likes or fans Small Business Saturday, American Express does donate a dollar to the organization Girls Inc., which encourages young girls and women to become entrepreneurs. And as of yesterday, they had 500,000 fans, which means $500,000 to the organization. So we are all doing good locally and globally with Small Business Saturday. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Joe Edgell, I'm the co-chair of the former TFEA. I just want to let you know that I'm not going to be here on the 29th, because I have some surgery which I'm going to be undergoing. So if you don't mind, I'll watch the council meeting on video and then be filing some comments. But I've encouraged the other TFEA members to be here to comment. Did get one comment tonight, which I wanted to let you know from John Peterson, one of the TFEA members. He wanted me to let you all know that Tacoma is not a regional leader on the environment, and hasn't been that way for some time, and asked the question of, do you all want that to stay that way? He also asked, he specifically wanted me to mention that you all appointed the TFEA member as a committee of experts, a diverse range of experts, people who work in politics, scientists, experts in the environment. And we would ask that you rely on that expertise rather than trying to bring your own expertise to bear on the report when looking at the conclusions. As I mentioned previously, there's always an easy way to say no, sometimes it's hard to say yes on issues. But I'd encourage you, look for ways to implement the various recommendations that we've made, and I'll be more specific on recommendations later. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Barry Howard, 7600 Wildwood Drive. Just a couple of comments about the automated service request system, MyTKPK. So first of all, I'd like to applaud the city for implementing the system, I think it's very useful. And I have used it probably a dozen times over the last six months. However, I have one comment that I would like to see happen with the system, is I'd like to see more effort in, to close the loop when a citizen initiates a service request. Because out of those, probably 12 service requests that I've placed, I think I've only received probably a response from two or three of them, where I know that the issue was dealt with, or I was not correct in my assumption about a code issue, or something like that. So for instance, and for the record, there's a large pothole at, in front of 1350 Holton Lane, and it'll probably just get worse as the winter sets in, so it'd be nice to have that addressed sometime soon. And then also, right around one of the traffic circles on Wildwood, right at the corner of the property that's 1119 Kirkland Avenue, there's a large pothole around one of the utility throats there, too. But I don't want to put a pall on my comments, I do think it's a very useful system, and I will continue to use it and encourage other ones to do so. And I have not, I've often identified myself, rather than use the anonymous feature. So that's why it's, I sort of expected sort of that feedback loop to be closed, and to hear what the progress was, if it was something that I wouldn't be able to ascertain just by looking at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very helpful. Anybody else? Okay, then we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Clay.
We had a couple of very exciting meetings here, on I think it was the 1st of November and the 8th of November. And as we all learned on the, well, I think we learned on the 1st of November, but it was confirmed on the 8th of November that the city really does own the road that runs along Ethan Allen at 410, and that we are responsible for maintaining it, we know that it is in poor condition. And I asked the city manager, I think on the 9th of November, to provide some information about what it would cost to fix the parts of Ethan Allen that are essentially in the worst condition, which would help us with the safety concerns that are there, with people essentially trying to get around potholes by pulling into the other lane of the two-lane road, the damage that's being done to the homes of the people who live along that area, and damage to the vehicles, and general unsafe conditions. The response that I got back from the Public Works Director included an amount of, kind of a range of money that could be spent, depending on kind of how much time we have to do, what kinds of repairs. It was a guess, or guesstimate, or estimate that was done with the contractor in the $30,000 to $50,000 range. And I would like the city to conduct at least some of those repairs. If we think back to last, I think it was May or June, just as we were passing the budget for this year, we talked about repairing Ethan Allen, we were committed to making the repairs on Ethan Allen, and there was some thought that we might be able to negotiate an agreement with the state. And so we removed that from the budget, and we agreed at that time that if we couldn't get an appropriate deal from the state, that we would, in this fiscal year, fix the road. I think that, timing being what it was, and the good faith efforts of everybody involved, we're not going to get to the point where we can commit to fixing the road in this fiscal year. But I think what we can do, and I think what we have a responsibility to do, is to make it safe for the people over the winter while we have a little bit of time. I realize that that's going to cost us $30,000 to $50,000, it might mean a budget amendment, but as you recall, we were going to take the $125,000 or $150,000 out of the reserve funds to begin with. And so I imagine we would have to, as a group, direct the city manager to make an effort to get the most egregious parts of the road patched, because it's not something that's in our budget right now, and I don't know.
Does that take a separate vote? Or is that something we just agree to now?
I don't know, that's why I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up and asking.
And we had talked at one point about putting this on next week to discuss it, but I see that it's not on the agenda, but I think we might want to add that.
Well, the problem is that it's November 22nd, and it's cold. And when I put this out on November 9th, and I said, "It's November 9th, it's winter, it's cold," time is pretty essential here. So we've known what it would cost for more than a week, had some discussions amongst the council about it, so.
If we agreed to do that now, would we need to do a budget amendment like next week, before we go on recess?
Well, you wouldn't be able to get it enacted before you go on recess, because it is a two reading ordinance. We have done budget amendments after the fact, the council would just need to make its legislative intent clear in providing that direction.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I think if we're going to do something, we should, we need to do something.
Are you moving, are you moving, Pat?
No, this is council comments.
Okay.
I'm trying to.
I didn't know that you couldn't move something during council comments.
I don't think so, because there's not an item to be moved. I'm just trying to get.
Trying to move us.
Yes.
Yes.
Please, for God's sakes, fix the road.
And I think, and I think we want to be moved, and I think everybody wants to make sure that we can do repairs to get through the winter. And I think we need a little, just a little short discussion about it to make sure that we are in agreement that we want to do it one way as opposed to another way. So if we do it next week, because it's, nothing's going to happen this week with a short week anyway.
Okay.
So if we, if we do something on Monday.
But it could come back to us as a first reading of a budget amendment, though. And that could be the topic that we discuss next week.
It could.
I think several times when we have done the budget amendments later, we just have to redirect.
I don't think that's a problem. So as long as we have the direction from the council.
And if sometimes you don't do the budget amendment, because sometimes that much money shakes out of the budget by the end of the year.
And there are other times, why don't we just wait and do a couple of them together?
Yeah.
So, that's not an issue.
That's the sum of my comments, thank you.
So that will be on next week. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, I'm very supportive of Councilmember Clay's approach, and I do remember when we all agreed that we would pay that money, even though we weren't putting it into the budget, so. I'm with you, and I apologize, we haven't kind of rectified the situation when you mentioned it on November 9th, so. Few comments, one is the leaf pickup situation. So I know we're doing fewer leaf pickups this year, and I'm not sure it can be rectified for this year, but I would urge us to think about providing some structure to that leaf pickup. I know there's always this question of if it's rainy, or if leaf pickup goes slower than anticipated, but on some streets, and I know we do this on Philadelphia, right, because it's a heavily trafficked street, so we tell people in advance the day the leaf pickup's going to happen. I think on other streets that would make sense, particularly streets that have a lot of on-street parking. I know on my street on Maple Avenue, this weekend, they came by to pick up the leaves on Saturday morning, and I fortunately heard it and ran out in my pajamas and moved my car in time so the leaves could be vacuumed up. But many people weren't, didn't do that, and then so a lot of the leaves, you know, didn't get picked up. And up near the church, there was actually parking, you know, cars basically parked in every spot available on both sides. So I do think we need to be a little more conscious on those streets where there's heavy parking, particularly if we're going to do this in the future years again. I think it's just two leaf pickups this year, that we need to figure out a way to give people notice so that they can be prepared and not have their cars there. The second one is to continue to request that we reach out to Pepco and understand what is actually going on in terms of the work on Maple Avenue, and the pole replacement that's happening there. They still haven't really given us any notice about what's going to occur, the duration of the work, is there going to be electrical outages for periods of time when they actually restring the lines? And then lastly, I know there's a lot of Maple Avenue items, but right in front of the church at the corner of Tulip and Maple on Maple, there's a large square that's cut out that's unpaved near the eastern curve, so if you're coming down Maple towards Philadelphia. And it looks like there's probably some utility work done, and they just haven't even done a temporary patch. So they need to do a temporary, and then probably the permanent patch at this point's going to have to wait until the spring. But I don't know, you know, I know that they're slow on that sometimes, and I just worry about that situation deteriorating. So those are my comments, thanks.
Councilmember Anderson.
I'm also supportive of spending a reasonable and not too big amount of money on Route 410. I support Councilmember Clay's approach.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Barb, I would just be curious at some point to get a report from Ms. Braithwaite on how the leaf collections are going this year. I noticed that they've reduced the staff size for the leaf pickup, at least when I've seen them, they've had just one person outside the truck in addition to the driver. And I know that's a reduction from last year. So I'm just curious how it's going, and appreciate it.
When they were picking up on Maple, they had two people outside and one person inside the truck, just.
Oh, good. Maybe it was just an anomaly that day.
Well, we knew there were going to be reductions.
Yes.
And what else? Okay.
About me?
Oh, sorry.
You didn't turn the light on.
Yeah. And Councilmember Snipper.
It's hard to turn the light from the Outer Banks. I'm, just so everyone knows, I'm in Ripley County in the Outer Banks for Thanksgiving. I think it's a family gathering here, and I want to wish everyone a nice and safe holiday. I too support the fix on Ethan Allen, the approach that Colleen outlined. I think we should go ahead with that as soon as possible, so that, I would prefer not to even wait until next week to get started with the work, just because I'm concerned that if cold weather arrives, they won't be able to do a good job. And that's it. Thank you.
City managers' comments.
Just one item this evening, just wanted to note that at your place is at the dais, with the exception of Councilmember Snipper, of course, is a copy of an email that was sent by Alana Blanchard to the council earlier today. It is a draft resolution that will appear on next week's council agenda. We wanted to get this in your hands as soon as possible. If you could, please take a look at this, and if you have any suggested changes, please provide those comments to Ms. Blanchard by the end of the business day tomorrow. And that's it.
Okay, then we will move along to item number one, which is a presentation on the Small Community Grant Review Committee recommendations. And we're going to be joined by a couple members of the committee. However you'd like to do it, if you do want to share the podium, or.
Well, I think we'll have Jacqui nearby if we need her, yeah.
We could also, if you, if you want, you can sit up here on these two, however you want to do it.
Either way, which do you?
It's probably more comfortable for you to be up there.
And you'll just be sharing a microphone.
Right, okay, you can do that.
Welcome.
Mayor and city council and staff, I'm Julie Evans, this is Jacqueline Schick. We are representing the Small Community Grant Program Review Committee. You have your report here, and it's available to the public as, okay. So we, Jesse Carpenter sent us 11 proposals to review, and the committee met and reviewed each one to its merit against the guidelines of the program. The budget was only $10,000, and where most of them were going for the full $2,500, obviously, even if we had loved them all, we had, would have had some hard decisions. So we, you know, kind of independently reviewed them, kind of, there were some we liked better than others, based on the, how well it met the goals of the program. And we made our recommendations on that basis. So, right, so Manah Food Center, that was one we liked, but I see the city staff made other recommendations, so. But, yeah, we liked the fact that it did target, you know, local schoolchildren, and, you know, without going into a lot of detail, it, you know, we thought it had merit. The old Tacoma Business Association Recycled Public Art Exhibit, we thought was innovative, would provide good publicity, provide opportunity for, lure people into the downtown area and showcase to the community. And then auctioning the art exhibits off at the festival was, I thought, was a nice way to end that, that we thought that had, proposal had a lot of merit. So we approved for most of the funding to be done on that for $2,000. We did have a concern about damage that might be done to the sidewalk with the installation, and that was an area of concern.
The question there, put very succinctly, was would the cost of repairs of the sidewalk exceed, given in the grant?
With the Hancock Rain Garden Committee, we liked that one and recommended partial funding. I see the city council, I mean, I'm sorry, city staff had, well, that's, if Jesse wants to comment on that, we'll just get through. Okay, the Crossroad Farmers Market PTA partnership, it's a good continuation of an effective program, and to educate children in healthy eating habits. The proposal was well described and budgeted, and it falls on the success of past year. So we recommended, given the tight funding available for the overall program, partial funding. The Tacoma Park Business Directory and Survival Guide is one the city council has supported in the past to support the outreach on services to their Business Community Guidebook. And although much of the material is available on the internet, many residents do not have already access to the internet, there's the English, you know, for Spanish-speaking community, it's also useful. But, so we recommended partial funding. The Tacoma Park Jazz Fest workshops, they, it's a well-established arts project, and the workshops was some, a discreet project, that the funding was worthwhile to encourage youth art in the arts. So we recommended partial funding on that. Montgomery Oaks Management Gardening Project, it's a very nominal amount. We thought there were some things that weren't clear about how it was going to be assigned, but, you know, so our, our vote was not to approve it. But, and then the mobile medical care to support nurse salaries at the CASA Maryland. And it's, you know, they're getting a lot of funding from other places, and we didn't think the, the proposal didn't delineate how the grant would support Tacoma Park residents in particular, other than contributing to fund the paid salaries. So, you know, from, our committee's vote on that was not to approve. New Avenue's lecture series, it's interesting, but it didn't directly meet the goals of the program in a mean. the program in a meaningful manner and we voted not to approve that. Home Day School Conference attendance at the Reggio Children's Conference in Italy, didn't think this application met the goals of the program. And the organization is not a nonprofit, so we did not recommend that. And lastly, for Job Skills Training Center, Educare Support Services Resource and Skills Training Center, we didn't think it was clear how the funds requested would be applied other than part of their general operating budget.
Okay.
So I think I'll turn it over to...
Thank you.
Okay.
Jesse, you're gonna...
Sure. I'll present the results of the staff review. And I should say, this year again, the staff and the Small Grant Committee did an independent review. And I think this year, more than last year even, it seems clear to us that we need to be doing a joint review.
Right.
Because there were questions that, you know, sharing information, I think, would definitely be helpful in doing this. And then we could, I think, most likely develop a recommendation jointly that the council, it would make things a bit easier.
Jesse pointed out, there's other programs and considerations and we...
We were surprised to see the Manah Foods Center would be getting $14,000 in a block grant, a community block grant, which had we had known, we would've had, I mean, we think it's a very worthwhile program and should be supported. We were impressed with the fact that $2,500 was going 100% to food. You know, it's a worthwhile organization. But our decision would've probably been rather different had we known that they were slated to get other funds.
Right. And anyway, we think your recommendation to have a, you know, to work with the city staff on that is an excellent one, that, you know, these differences would be, you know, worked out.
Right. So then we'd have the community perspective and the staff perspective of what other funding these organizations are receiving and we have a little more background information on some of them.
And are there any structural impediments to doing that, the way this is set up? Or you can just go ahead and do it?
It was set up to have an independent review, but we're gonna recommend some revisions to the guidelines. One of the things you'll see on the agenda cover sheet, we had talked about, have joined the joint review and also set up some more, make the criteria for the grants more specific so, and perhaps we would use a point system to evaluate the application so it would be a little more objective.
But that could all be done by the staff and the committee? Or is there anything that the council would have to do to change anything?
I don't think, that would be our recommendation. I don't think the council would need to do anything if you're in agreement with the joint review.
And so you were gonna make some comments about the staff?
Sure.
Recommendations and go to comments?
Right.
Questions?
So the staff recommendations were, in some areas, there was total convergence and in other areas that we differ quite a bit. The staff did agree, did suggest partial funding for the Tacoma Park Jazz Fest. That program ran last year successfully and we did think it would be appropriate to recommend funding again this year. The Montgomery Oaks Management Community Garden Project, that is a case where I think the committee was not able to be familiar with what's going on, but the council is aware of the planters at the Franklin Apartments and there has been a problem with the residents at the Franklin being able to afford to rent the planters for their community garden. So...
We were confused about why anybody's renting planters.
Right. It was as part of a CDVG project, the city had, with Montgomery County, established a planter community garden in the apartment parking lot down at the base of Maple Avenue. And you'll notice, you might note, that if you have seen those planters, they are largely empty and unused. And the management company in the apartment, the apartments, thought that if they could support the residents of the building and being able to pay for the plots, I think it's a $25 fee for it, to rent the planter for the planting season. And this funding would go to support those residents.
So the county is imposing this rent?
It's a community garden project and the way the system works, there is a charge for the community garden.
I see.
Right. So that was why staff recommended supporting that project. The mobile medical care, it's true, it's a nice, this is the Mobile Med Clinic in front of CASA at 714 East University Boulevard. And one of the reasons the staff supported it is if the clinic can demonstrate a benefit to Tacoma Park residents, and they did indicate that, they did have over 20912 ZIP Code patients at that clinic. But if they can demonstrate that Tacoma Park residents, particularly in Woods 5 and 6, where a lot of these projects wouldn't necessarily benefit those areas, we thought it might be, it might be good to provide funding for that program. The New Ave's project is a lecture series that was proposed and staff did not recommend funding that. The Crossroads Farmers Market and Rolling Terrace Elementary School, they again requested funding for the Crossroads Healthy Eating Initiative and staff recommended partial funding for that project. They haven't yet completed their project from last year, but we've heard good things about it and recommended partial funding. The Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School, this funding was definitely something that the council had discussed during the budget process and decided not to fund it. They subsequently applied for a small community grant and staff recommended partial funding of their request to help them transition to full independence for the Survival Guide, given that the Survival Guide is a, benefits Tacoma Park residents greatly, in addition to the funding for the project benefiting the nursery school. The Home Day Care School, we did not recommend funding for that. The Hancock Avenue Rain Garden Committee request, they had requested funding to put a sign at the Stormwater Rain Garden Project that the city had installed. And for that, city staff felt that the city should just pay for that sign. It shouldn't come out of the Small Community Grant Program. It's a worthy project and an educational sign. It could certainly be funded by the city through other funding. So we did not recommend that project, but certainly felt it should be funded. The Manah Foods Center, the reason the staff did not recommend funding is they have, were awarded $14,000 in CDVG funding for this year. And even though it's a very worthy, proven, beneficial project, given the amount of funding that that program is already receiving, we didn't support funding for this year. Finally, the Old Tacoma Business Association, I think there was agreement on that project, certainly for the Recycle Public Art exhibit, staff supported funding that project. And it occurs to me that I may have last year sent the applications to the council and this year I did not do that. So if you were, if you felt like you would like to be able to see the applications in order to make a more informed decision before next week, I could certainly email the applications to the council. But I didn't do that this year.
Okay. A number of council members wanna make comments. I usually hold mine till the end. I'll just make a quick little proposal at the beginning in the interest of moving the discussion along. You can agree with it, you can ignore it, you can do anything you want with it, but I'll just go through the list here real quick and see if I can, if I've come up with something that I think melds the committee report and the staff report. If we look at the, at the order of the projects as delineated by the committee, I would just put out there a proposal to give $2,500 to number two, the Old Town Business Association Recycle Public Art Project. $1,500 to number four, Crossroads Farmers Market Rolling Terrace Partnership. $1,500 to number five, the Business Directory and Survival Guide. $1,000 to the Jazz Fest Workshops. $500 to the Montgomery Oaks Gardening Project. And $2,500 to number eight, the Mobile Medical Care contingent on identifying the users as city residents. And that comes up to a total of $9,500. So I'll just put that out there as a possible solution, but there are comments. And first up, is Councilmember Wright?
First question I have is, is the $14,000 that Manah Foods is getting for the CDVG, is that to fund a specific effort around the snack, the smart snacks distribution? Or is it part of their larger, because they do a number of food efforts?
I believe it's specifically for the Smart Snacks Program. It's a large countywide program.
Okay. Because they have other, they have other...
Other food programs.
Food programs. The second question I have is, is number eight, is that an application by Mobile Medical Care or is CASA making the application?
Mobile Med is making the application.
And it's an independent organization from CASA, correct?
It's, my understanding is that it is.
Okay. And then, lastly, just for next year, I do like the idea of a joint discussion, but I would actually like to see, still see a separate decision by the, the recommendation by the committee versus the staff. And just my feeling is that I just wanna make sure that the committee feels like they truly do have an independent voice to us. But I do think it's very, would be very good to have some discussion beforehand because there are some issues, it sounds like.
Yeah. I think the way to do that would be, this hasn't been the second go around, Julie and I on this, is to do an informational meeting that's joint and then each committee, each group can then go about their normal business in reviewing them independently and creating the reports. But then there'd just be some background information that we're not necessarily, would have as just citizens.
Good.
And I'd vote for the mayor's recommendations.
Councilmember Seans.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would not like to see the council making major changes to the recommendations. I'd rather see the committee making changes to the recommendations, coming back to us if that's, if that's possible, based on, you know, the complete information you get beforehand. And I agree that next year, having an informational session before you go into your decision-making would probably be very helpful and be a preferred way of doing business. The, another piece of information that doesn't seem to have been on the table is that for the Tacoma Park Business Directory and Survival Guide, that this council had previously funded that and we had phased out the funding so that they had time to become independent. And now this is over and beyond that, that it looks like they're asking for funds to phase out, something that's been phased out supposedly. The other, the other thing I would point out is that business directories tend to be very profitable types of publications and they may need this phase-out money, but I think it would be very appropriate for you to be able to look at the budget information for that directory. Because if it is very profitable, then there's probably better uses of our small grants than to support profitable business enterprise.
It was our feeling, as we discussed, that they had had long-term support from the city and we thought that we were talking about supporting the government part of the directory, not, and that they were raising advertising funds from, you know, selling advertising for the rest of the cost of the directory. And so we thought, well, for the printing costs and what have you, for the government section, that...
Right. And again, that would be...
Yeah, just as the phase, recognizing that you had taken away funding.
Right.
And they were applying for something small, we thought, in this year, this might be worthy.
If that's what it's funding...
That was our, that was our perception.
If that's what it's funding, that's, that's fine. If it's, if it's...
Yeah, it could be...
If it's over and above, because we had talked about the, that it might be good to have the city offering that as opportunity for other businesses in the city. And we mentioned specifically the Tacoma Voice and, and the Gazette and other businesses in the city that might wanna publish that information. And if we're going to be paying for information to be published, then it ought to be open to all the businesses in Tacoma Park. So anyways, again, that's just having all the information to make the decision.
They were clear that, you know, the city support had been, was for the Survival Guide part of it and that, you know, it had been cut back and that, but they were looking for...
Right. But our reasons for cutting it back was so that it could be available for other businesses to compete for.
Oh, yeah.
And, okay. But anyways, it's just part of the information that you need to have in front of you when you're making these decisions.
Right.
I'm not saying the decision would've been different, but I just wanna make sure that you have the information. And I, and like I said, I respect Mayor Williams' suggestions, but I think it's, I think it's a better idea to have the committee come back with the recommendations, revised recommendations.
Yeah. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. I guess I'd say I find the presentation here tonight to be disorganized and it's hard for me to make a decision here to follow the mayor's proposition as to what we ought to support. You guys were working without all the information you should've had. And this isn't the place to be at this meeting for, for staff to be imparting that information to you. But that should've been done before. And so I would suggest that, that that be done, not here, but that you get together with staff and encourage you to go back and take a fresh look at your final decisions and see if you wanna modify them at all. I do strongly recommend and suggest that the staff's recommendation is a good one, but I think I'd be inclined to agree with some of the other council members who, I guess, suggested the idea that, that the staff being an advisory to you rather than being that this is part of the decision-making. Because if that's the case, then it kind of obviates the need for an independent committee.
Exactly, yeah.
But you need all the support from the staff that the staff has to give you. And I'm sure that that's an abundant amount of useful information. And also, in regard to the, your committee, I've made this recommendation in regard to how we do the large grants in the city as well. And that is, is that if we're gonna have an advisory committee that's in effect making, helping to make decisions about doling out money, to me, it seems like it might be a good idea to have committee members rotate on and off of that committee, you know, maybe each, you know, sort of on a staggered basis over a period of time. Like you have, what, five members on your committee? You know, and so somebody could serve three years and rotate off. And so that way, while, you know, it preserves the institutional knowledge, but it also allows other people to be able to get involved in the decision-making and so that it isn't ever viewed by anybody as a sort of a separate group of people who get to make these calls. But, so those would be my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Can you come back with a, with a kind of a new look? Is that something that you would do? Or are we in a position where we ought to decide to accept your, your recommendations or the mayor's or some other mix tonight?
Well, we certainly would draft a revision and based on commentary and stuff and probably talk the email with the holiday coming up, you know, and try and... You know, and try and get together with everybody, perhaps. But, and have no problem doing that, if that is your direction, we're--
I would second--
Do as directed. It's, you know, not a problem.
Okay, and there's not a timing issue, is there?
Well, that's, I was, I was wondering, though, when, when do you need to provide the funds?
You know, there's not that much difference from, you know, our, our recommendation and, and the, the staff recommendation, given that, you know, they've come back with, you know, in some, in a couple of cases, with some additional information and alternatives. And by and large, there's not a big difference from our recommendation and the staff recommendation.
Yeah, they are in line. I think the, one committee member sent an email to me prior surprise at the medical, the Mobile Med, and it is being sort of the operating view of the committee, that salaries are not funded by grants. And in our experience in various other organizations, which we do have some of our members with grant work behind them, that that's not typically something that is funded through grants of this, of this type.
Well, I'm, I'm-- I mean, I'm happy, because you're the committee who's making the recommendations, I'm happy to accept, accept the recommendations that you make after appropriate consultation with staff.
Sure.
My question really is, can you take another go at it, given the new information that you've got? Bring that, bring your final recommendations, as it were, back to us--
Yeah, okay.
--in some form? And then, I, because I'm, I'm likely to vote for what you recommend, unless there's something egregious. And I'm particularly likely to vote for it if you've consulted with staff.
Sure.
And, and my last comment is, is the New Avenue's, that's not a staff proposal itself, because I know we have a New Av, New Hampshire, New Av. This is something entirely different from a private entity?
It's, it's related to the New Av's program, but it's from, it's not a staff-directed initiative.
Okay, I, I would actually like to see that proposal. So if you could send that one to me. So I'm, I, again, my preference, I guess, to be clear, my preference is to have you come back with a second round of proposals.
And Councilmember Clay has a question, but maybe we can find out from the city manager whether the, the timing on this, whether there's any difference between voting on something next week and voting on something in early January?
We were just talking about that. We were just trying to get the grants approved by the council at the earliest opportunity, mainly because the, the goal was to have all the funds expended by the end of the fiscal year. Certainly, if the council feels more comfortable waiting until January--
End of Jan, of calendar year, I think.
Um, yeah, end of the fiscal year, June 30th of 2011.
Oh, having them expended, extended, expended by, I understand.
Right, so that's the only thing, we just increase the likelihood that either the grantees might feel a little pushed, or you might end up having to carry funds over again into the, you know, the following fiscal year.
Councilmember Clay.
Well, I want to thank you for your service to the community and to the committee. I really appreciate it. And I want to say I'm, I'm sorry that we don't have a better process for you to engage in as community volunteers, and I hope that, as we've learned about sort of what has happened, that we'll go back and fix this now. I remember you coming to us last year and thinking that--
It's a new process.
Yeah. I think we're working the bugs out, and we have done the, some alternating the membership, where some will be, you know, yeah, going one year and two years. So we'll get, you know, turnover in the committee membership, and it's already been done, so, okay.
Well, so, yeah, I wasn't blaming anybody, I just, you know, I remember that, you know, the first time you came forward, I thought, wow, you picked, you know, pretty much all the things that I would have picked. And when we were first talking about the Small Grants Program, kind of that was what I had in mind. And when I look at it this year, what I feel like is the applicants that we got this year aren't what I had in mind, not so, you know, not so much about sort of what got picked, but that it's kind of what I had in mind. Well, I was thinking more about the Small Grant Program as, as like sort of a catalyst for neighborhood change. And by small, like, I was thinking micro. So I was thinking, like, you know, the Boy Scouts did their deal last year where they had a little business startup where they were going to do, like, leaf raking and work on people's yards, and probably, you know, that would be, you know, something to get some help with, to start as a little kind of business incubator kind of thing. The other thing that's clear is that probably when people turn in their applications, they should have a staff review first, so that if, if it's something like the signage thing, they could get directed to signage first before we even, so they could be told kind of what more, a more appropriate application process is, before we have you expend your community volunteer hours on something that we're just going to turn around and fund with, with our budget dollars anyway. I have concerns like you do about continuing funding. I don't want to pick up somebody's continuing funding for something. So I haven't seen the nurses' application, but like, that would be sort of what would stand out about it. Although, it sounds like a great project, I would love to find a way to support, you know, clinics in the city. But I don't think that the Small Grant Program, again, is the, is the vehicle for that. I'm also concerned about the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nurse Degree School. That's, that's someone coming, it seems like a workaround funding, where the council has specifically decided to just continue funding, and we didn't refer them to the Small Grants Program. What my recollection was, was that they were publishing a specific part of like a government directory in the beginning of their booklet, and we stopped funding that part of the government directory. So they're not providing that anymore, and the nine or $10,000 was supposed to be the additional publishing cost for that portion of the government directory. So that was my recollection of that, and why I would question giving them money at all. You already mentioned salaries for an ongoing program, and then there's kind of eventual, the eventual sustainability. So that kind of leaves me with the, the farmers market. I'd be open to hearing more about the Mobile Medical Care and what the staff has to say about it. And I thought the comments about the community garden and the Montgomery Oaks management maybe would have changed your mind too, about whether that was feasible or not. But I would agree with the other council members that we should take the information that's been provided and, and give it back to the committee, if you could possibly do that. So, the other thing, the other question that I have is, who submitted the New Avenue's proposal?
It was submitted by Pamela Spar and Paul Grenier.
And Paul Grenier works for the city?
He does.
Thank you.
But it wasn't submitted, it was submitted independently, yes.
Okay. I'm not going to comment on that one. So I would agree with the other council members, that it would be ideal if you could take the information back. And I would agree with the other comments that were made, and your assessments about the various pieces. So, thank you.
So it sounds like we have a desire to have the committee go back and come back with revised recommendations at the earliest possible convenience, and that all just depends on you.
And encourage you to talk with staff, make sure you have all the information ahead of time.
All right.
Anything else that we need to do?
It would, it would be our suggestion that we plan to, to allow a sufficient amount of time, that we plan to come back in January, don't you think?
Certainly, yeah, with the holidays.
Yes. Because our turnaround time, the council only meets one more time before Christmas, so the turnaround time is really only tomorrow and Wednesday.
So is there a notification to the people that have put in these applications, that their final decision would be delayed?
I can do that.
I mean--
Seems fair.
Well, because we all were supposed to be here last time, but it got tapered because there were so many other huge issues to discuss, and we understood that, not a problem. So, yeah, so that's sort of delay number two, then. So we can, so as long as you let them know that's--
Okay, and, forgot, Councilmember Snipper, did you have any other thoughts on this one?
Thank you for remembering, sir.
I'll give credit to Councilmember Clay.
Thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Clay. No, I essentially agree with what has been proposed. I certainly thank you, thank the committee for all their work on this. All the work to review this many proposals and come up with recommendations that manage to fit into our dollar amount, which is always a good thing. And I support the idea of having some kind of process next year in which the staff can provide additional information to the committee. But I do like the idea of the committee having an independent review. And finally, I support that the committee comes back as soon as possible, and if that turns out to be January, I'll soviet with the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
And we'll move to our first regular meeting item, which is agenda item number two, a first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2.12 Administrative Regulations, Chapter 4.04 Civil Service, and Chapter 4.08 Collective Bargaining. City manager, like to make any comment? Oh, sorry, Ms. Hampton.
Ms. Hampton, Human Resource Manager. You have before you an ordinance which admits parts of the city code. As you may recall, earlier in the year, we contracted with Coleman &amp; Solsier as our Special Counsel for Employment and Labor Relations. We asked them to review our personnel policies, and they came back with several recommendations to help us to update and reorganize our policies. Some of these recommendations had been made by Sue Silver's office some time ago. And if you know, special note, in the council's strategic plan, there's a note to revise city personnel policies as well. Anyways, you have before you an ordinance which admits several sections to include Title II Administration, Chapter 2.12 Administrative Regulation. And this would include personnel policies and procedures in the definition of internal regulations, and would require a 30-day waiting period before it became effective, unless there was some emergency or something time-sensitive that we needed to put it into effect immediately. Title IV Personnel, Chapter 4.04 Civil Service. This would delete the Personnel Committee and the adoption of administrative regulations. This will clarify the city's process for making personnel policy changes. And the city's personnel officer, city manager, would implement internal personnel policies and procedures, provided that they didn't conflict with any other sections of the city code, or state law, or federal law. Also, in Title IV Personnel, Chapter 4.08 Collective Bargaining, language is going to be deleted, requiring the city to negotiate any proposed changes to the personnel policies. And this would not eliminate the city's duty to bargain good faith with terms and conditions employment with the union. Additionally, there's another section under this Title IV, which would allow the city manager, after conferring with the city council, to request renegotiation of the fiscal terms of a collective bargaining agreement if projected revenues falls below the level needed to fund the agreement. Additionally, I think it was noted that we would put on the city's website, once it's updated, more of the substance, more of the more meaningful policies that relate to employees, city employees, we'll post those on the website as well. So what we're asking for you this evening is to, to approve the first reading ordinance. There's a two-reading ordinance required to order, to admit any of the city code. And so, we're asking you to approve the first reading ordinance. Are there any questions?
Okay. I just have two quick ones. Do you want to just say a little bit more about the elimination of the Employee Personnel Committee? My recollection is that that committee never actually--
That's correct. In my time here, my tenure here, 14 years, the Personnel Committee has never met. And so, we like to delete that language.
Okay. And did we get any comments on any of this from the unions?
The union? I believe the union has been contacted and confirmed with the deputy city manager. Yes.
And, and there was no comment?
We have not received any comments back.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Wright?
I would, I would ask that we get an affirmative, some sort of, unless there's some legal reason not to do this, an affirmative letter from the union that acknowledges that we have, are making this, this change, they've been notified of it, and that they have chosen not to make any comment of any kind.
Yes. That's fine. On Tuesday, when this item was placed on the agenda, we did send to all of the union representatives the full package of information with all of that. I spoke with one of the representatives from Local 400, who was going to run it past their attorney, and if there was any concerns, that they would contact me back, and they have not. Certainly, there's another reading of this next week, and I'll make sure that they're contacted again to get an affirmative answer. But we have had that communication.
Great. The second item I have, or first, there's a question. On the external regulation, there isn't any real substantive change to what we're proposing, right? This is what we've done in the past. It looks like we've just slightly reordered the, not even reordered, just done, changed the numbering, but there's no substantive deletion of anything about how we conduct external regulations. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The reorganization was at Jesse's suggestion, just to put it all under sort of one caption, just to make it a little clearer.
Great. And then, on the internal regulations, so what we're proposing is that there be no public notice about internal regulations at all. Is, is that correct? Even though we have a 30-day waiting period from date an internal regulation is distributed, until it becomes effective?
That's correct.
I would suggest that since we have that 30-day waiting period, that any internal regulation that is considered substantive, and I would leave it to the discretion of the city manager about what's substantive, that we actually do provide notice of that. It doesn't have to be in the city newsletter, but available online. So I know that there's many things that, that go into internal regulations, some things as minute as where people might be parking. And that might not be something substantive, but there might be items that are substantive, that are still outside the collective bargaining process. You know, for example, we might adjust how we have our regulation around sick leave, not that, that, not the things that are in collective bargaining around sick leave, but, you know, simply how sick leave is approved, or if there, what the regulation is around abuse of sick leave. That might be considered substantive, and that I think it would be fair to have open disclosure about that. Again, not necessarily in the city newsletter, but online, to provide some notice. I think this, the city newsletter, depending on the timing of it, could actually slow that process down. But I think, in general, Tacoma Park is, is committed to open government, and I think on those substantive items, even though they're internal regulations, we'd want to be, we'd want to be open about that. That's my main comment.
Any other comments? Any public comment on this ordinance, first reading ordinance? Okay, somebody want to move it?
I'd like to make sure Ruben doesn't--
Move the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. And I'm assuming that, at this point, if Councilmember Snipper had any comments, he would shout out?
I don't have any additional comment.
Okay. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next up is a first reading ordinance approving a pilot agreement with Montgomery Health Partnership for 7667 Maple Avenue, the Park View Towers. And Linda Walker has joined us.
Good evening. Linda Walker, Department of Housing and Community Development. This is the first reading of an ordinance that would authorize the city to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Montgomery Housing Partnership for 7667 Maple Avenue, a 125-unit rental property it is purchasing with closing to take place in December. Because of council's concerns expressed in the November 15th meeting, MHP has modified its request for a 10-year pilot with a 100% local tax abatement, and so the attached ordinance reflects the modification to a five-year pilot with a 50% tax abatement for the years one and two of the agreement, and a 25% tax abatement for years three to five. This modification reduces the overall estimated tax abatement impact from $473, 77,130 to Mr. Goldman is here this evening, and he would like to, to address the council, if you will, and give you a little more detail.
Welcome to Rob Goldman and Artie Harris.
Hi. Yes, thank you. Rob Goldman with MHP. I appreciate letting me speak. As Linda said, taking the comments from last week, we tried to sort of see what we could do to sort of tighten up the request. Last year, last week, we had 100% request for 10 years, and so we decided from 10 years to make it five years to line it up with the length of time of our initial financing, which is a five-year acquisition loan. So, we brought it down to five years, and then looked at the numbers and thought we could live with sort of 50% for the first two years. Our goal would be, as we mentioned last week, to sort of stabilize the property in that first couple of years, bring down the utility costs, and with that, we feel we could then, you know, then bring down the pilot to 25%. Just to speak, just really quickly, you know, some of the benefits here. Obviously, as we spoke about last week, improvements to the property. As was mentioned, this property has had a number of housing code violations over the years. There's some immediate improvements that need to be done. There's some issues around sort of leaky water heating pipes, non-working exterior lighting, energy inefficient systems, crumbling parking lot, outdated elevators, high utility bill, security, a number of things that we have identified that we would do most immediately to improve the property, and obviously, that speaks to the quality of life for the residents. I would also argue, and, you know, with those improvements and that investment, you know, assessments will go up, and, you know, the ability for the city to sort of recoup some of those monies lost from the pilot, I think, would be there. Second, you know, we find at our properties, there's a lot of stability. Turnover is less than 20%. Well, in the marketplace, probably turnover is closer to 50%. With greater stability means residents stay in the community, they're more engaged in the community, kids stay in one school, do better in school as a result, and so I think there's some benefits there. We also provide community life programs at our programs, especially for larger properties like this. We have preschool programs, so kids are ready for kindergarten in school. We have after-school programs for the elementary school kids. We have scores, so we do track the kids in terms of their grades. Over the last, since we've been tracking, grades at our properties have gone, the average GPAs have gone from a 2.7 to a 3.2 for the kids, and it's been a steady growth over time, so we've seen real improvements in how the kids do in school. So, overall, I just, just put this request before you. I think there's a number of benefits that come about from MHP's work that go beyond just the, just the housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Clay.
Thanks for coming back again. As I said last week, I thought this project was a better deal than the last one that you had, and I thought that I would come back this week after I looked at it. I wasn't really ready to vote in favor of it last week, and I thought I would come back this week after I looked at it and probably find some good things about it, but I still don't think I'm going to vote for it tonight. I can understand why other people in the council might vote for it, for the reasons that you listed, because MHP has been a good partner, because they think that a vote for this will protect the tenants that are there, or will provide them with more affordable housing, because maybe you're going to be able to reduce the utility costs, although I don't think that's going to happen in the first five years of this pilot that we're talking about. But at the base, our housing policy right now is either sort of rent stabilization, or, well, actually, as, you know, Linda Walker came to the, to the cheer meeting this week and had a whole sheet of various housing policy things, but sort of the, the big meat of the policy around affordable rental housing is around, rent stabilization is one mechanism, which has an opportunity cost in tax revenue, and low-income housing tax credit, which we, we give a tiny bit of money to in the scheme of a project, but in exchange for that, what we get is that groups like yourself, primarily, I think, yourself and the city MHP, come in and they purchase large, large buildings, and sometimes small buildings, and they come under the low-income housing tax credit, which to me is great, because we don't have to operate it. It's a state and federal program, it's needs-based, all of the monitoring of that and the income requirements and everything happens outside of the city, so it doesn't require us to have a superstructure, so I like it. But whether it's rent stabilization or low-income housing tax credit, when we give money or give up money, we, we get something in exchange for it in terms of affordability, and I think you can make an argument in that in this case, we've essentially already paid for the affordability that we have. In, in one of the pieces that you wrote up here, part of the goal is not to have anyone leave the unit, so by definition, we're not really gaining any affordability for anybody else, or any more affordability, or cheaper rents for people based on their income. And if I understand that wrong, then when I get to the end, if you could tell me about that, that would be great. My understanding is it's the same people at the same rent levels as there are right now. I also still kind of feel like you've come to us the last couple of times with 100% requests, and, you know, the dire consequence of us not participating would be that you might lose the loans, or you might lose the deal, but I don't really feel like that's, that's true. Last time we, you know, I think you were able to complete the project with less than 100% pilot, and this time, within a week, you came back with a, you know, much less of a pilot, and I would prefer to see you come to us in the first round with kind of what, what it is you really need, because we have so few funds to give, and as the constituents are always reminding me, we have the highest tax rate of any city, so there's not kind of a lot to squeeze out there. The other argument that I think has been made on occasion by Councilmember Siemens is that if this isn't a low-income housing tax credit, like, what makes giving Montgomery Housing Partnership a pilot any different than us giving a pilot to any other owner of a large rental building, other than that you're a nonprofit entity? And I think, you know, that's, that, that argument, my response to that argument has always been, well, it's a low-income housing tax credit property, so what you get in exchange is, you know, the guaranteed income requirements that are sort of monitored by an outside group. Another issue that I have for this project is that it was, it was bid on with the nonprofit dollars, but with the idea that, but there is public money in the deal, because there's county, you know, there's the county forgiveness, and you're looking for the city forgiveness, and I'm not, if you have a public, you know, should, should the publicly funded group or the nonprofit group that's getting some public funding essentially set the price for what housing costs in the neighborhood, I think, as sort of a larger economic argument, I'm not sure that would be the case. I understand that there were other bidders on this project with private capital, and I'm not sure why we would want to outbid the, the private capital. I also think you're going to come back to us as you flip this deal over. I'm not sure what it's going to look like, if it's going to look like the last deal that you came back to us with, which I thought was a really high-cost deal. The argument was made by some council members that you don't really know what it's going to cost to get the place fixed, and last time we talked, you said you wouldn't go into another purchase deal unless you knew what it was going to cost to fix the place, but we don't really hear that you know what it's going to cost to fix the place, and it seems to me like you'll, you'll be back when you flip that deal over with your new private investors in the low-income housing tax credit deal, and you'll be asking for a pilot again at that time. So, so that's kind of where I'm at with it, and why I'm, I'm not ready to say that I would support it. I, you know, I hear you that you guys have been really good partners, and there's the school thing and everything, but I have to make a decision that I could make for the same people that came forward with the same argument, and without the, without the low-income housing tax credit part of it, it's really hard for me to make that argument, because I think that there probably are a lot of different entities that could make several of the arguments that you're making. So, like I said, I'm particularly interested to know if there's some additional deal that goes on. You know, I know you said you'd have the 60% thing, but are you actually going to lower rents for people, or rents going to stay exactly the same for people in the same configuration that they're in now?
Okay. See, you had a lot there, but I'll try to get some.
Well, and I don't expect you to address all the broader philosophical economic issues, but.
And there's one aspect I didn't mention, and I apologize, and we also, as part of our change in requests, I think there was some questions about income levels, and I think to the point that you made about, because this isn't a, initially is not a tax credit deal, until it's a tax credit deal, you know, what's going to happen with the incomes? What are we agreeing to do? And so, the, you know, the language you have does provide for, you know, certain percentages, that 60% is median, so we are committing to that. To the extent the city's not comfortable overseeing that, I think the county could do that. County's also doing a pilot. They, you know, they're much more comfortable. They do this on all their sort of deals, and so they have sort of the regulatory framework to do it, so I'm sure we could, that part could be worked out. But we are, you know, our mission is affordable housing. Obviously, you want more than just that, our statement of that, and we're definitely committed to it, and we can put that in writing. To speak to your point about the displacement, we just feel like, you know, just every property we buy, we just don't, we feel like, especially when we see properties that aren't well-kept, that we sort of will come in, and people who have suffered through the bad times, all of a sudden have to then leave when times are good. So, we try to have as a general policy that we don't want to displace anyone. But then, what you also have is sort of turnover. I mean, there's a natural, as I said, it's less than 20%, but it's not zero. I don't think, you know, people move, people buy houses, people do different things, so people leave, and it's sort of what happens on turnover, and, you know, what we're committing to is, you know, that there will continue to be folks at, you know, at certain income levels that will be at that property, and so that's the commitment we've made, that's the commitment we're, you know, committed to. Our goal, you know, this is sort of the short term, our goal is, is to get to a tax credit deal, is to, is to commit to a broader set of income requirements that will be monitored, you know, by the tax credit folks, and which, with a much more substantial renovation. So, that's our ultimate goal, but in the short term, you know, that's, this is what we, we're happy to do. The other piece I'll say is, and I think another aspect, and I maybe didn't go in enough detail, you know, the community life programs we provide, you know, do cost money, and distinguishes us, I think, from the other typical buyer. And so, we are committing, you know, resources are basically our own funds that probably would exceed, you know, you know, I don't know what our, I mean, could probably exceed probably 20, you know, over $30,000 a year in some of the programs we do, and against, again, we haven't worked out the complete array of programs, so I don't know what the cost will be, but a property like this would far exceed $30,000 as when we look at other comparable.
And you're going to do that starting when you own the building?
And so, we're happy to, you know, commit to that. We, you know, also doing that at Maple, and there'll probably be some combined effort as Maple gets finished in March, which is, you know, something we've already committed to, to have sort of the folks there be able to participate in some type of programming. So, I think that there is some things that distinguish us from the other buyer, and means that resources that we're bringing to the table and have direct benefits, as I mentioned, in terms of how kids perform at school, how families are due overall, and things like that, so.
If you had to choose between a pilot now or a pilot later, which one would you pick? That's my last question.
I guess, I mean, a pilot now, I mean, we feel like we, you know, when you look at these numbers, a zero pilot means a negative cash flow, so we, we need a pilot now to make it work.
Councilmember Robbins.
Thanks for coming again. I'm a little confused. Is MHP a nonprofit?
Yes.
And the entity that'll own this building is a nonprofit?
Yes. It's a affiliate. It won't be MHP itself. All our properties are owned by affiliates, and the reason we do that is that the lenders require sort of a single-purpose entity to be the owner.
Sure. But will that other entity be a nonprofit, or is that clear?
At this point, it will be, I think it's LLC, an LLC of which MHP would be the main partner or affiliate. So, a nonprofit, yes. Will be the owner in the first, in the initial acquisition phase. When we get to tax credits, that becomes effectively a for-profit entity, because 99% of the, .9% of the owner is a, are for-profit investors who are trying to get tax benefits, so that entity is substantially a for-profit, but during this acquisition phase, it is a nonprofit entity.
Okay. I think the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, unless I'm wrong, that relates to nonprofits who wouldn't ordinarily pay taxes, because they're nonprofits, and instead of paying the taxes, they make a payment in lieu of taxes, because they won't be subject to taxes. I believe I've got that. Why else would it be a payment in lieu of taxes?
It can be just something that's different than what they might ordinarily pay, so.
Any nonprofit or a for-profit, is something different than what they'd ordinarily, so it's an adjustment to taxes? Is that what we're talking about?
A reduction.
A reduction.
If I could get out of paying my taxes.
If you could get the council to vote to give you a payment in lieu of taxes, sure. I'm not voting for that, though.
We're not, well, we're not giving them, we're not discussing giving you a, I guess, we're discussing giving you a payment in lieu of taxes, in a sense.
Oh, that's a payment in lieu of what?
Yes. Well, we're not paying them. We're, we're agreeing that they don't have to pay as many taxes, and I, but my point is that I thought that that would, that, for example, the Adventist Hospital is a nonprofit, and they don't pay taxes, but they've agreed to pay us a certain amount of money in lieu of the taxes that they would ordinarily pay. And my understanding is that's what the pilot implies, signifies, and the meaning of the pilot. So, I'm, I'm bringing it up kind of, you know, ad nauseam here a little bit, because I don't think we're talking about a pilot. I think we're talking about, as, as we've discussed, a reduction in taxes based on the good works that you're proposing to give us. And I'm not the expert that Councilmember Clay and Snapper and others on this council are about, about this, but this, it strikes me as, that this is, in essence, kind of a county program. Really, that's how it strikes me. You stated that the county's the one who could monitor the, the folks who are going to be in there at a reduced income stream, and, and my sense is that this doesn't jive with our, it's not, maybe, maybe we're not quite there yet, or something, that it doesn't quite jive with our affordable housing program, in that it's not rent stabilization, and anyway, thank you for coming.
Councilmember Ray.
Well, thank you a lot for coming again. I know you've been before us on many evenings, including on this one before. You know, I agree with many things, things that Councilmember Clay said, in particular, you know, this conflict about how we're providing affordable housing, and although we've discussed that before we got on the council, I'd be happy to have that discussion again. I know that probably makes many people's heads hurt, and I don't want to do that. But I would want to move forward. But I would want to move forward with a simple proposal to you all. I think it builds off something that Councilmember Clay said when she asked the question about whether you'd take a pilot now or take a pilot in the future. I am inclined generally not to vote for the pilot because of the way we do provide affordable housing, but in this case, given the situation in the building, and knowing that residents are living in really substandard conditions in Tacoma Park, and we have an opportunity to fix that situation, I would propose that we grant what's been proposed here, which is a five-year term of a 50% pilot for year one and two, which probably really helps with the immediate cash flow issues and structuring the financing appropriately to buy the building, and then a 25% pilot for year three, four, and five, and these commitments around the affordability levels. But with the understanding that when you do your tax credit deal to renovate the building, that you go in upfront, understanding there's not going to be an overall pilot for the longer-term deal, and that you make the financing work based on that going into it, so that you, when you factor in the improvements you're going to do to the building, that you don't factor in an ongoing pilot. And that allows us to deal with longer-term sustainability around how we finance affordable housing, and that we haven't chosen this way to do it. And it also gives us some ongoing tax revenue, with the potential also for some upside on that if the assessment of the property does go up over time. So that's kind of what I propose, what I feel comfortable...
You make it as a motion? Why don't you just do that?
So, yes, that's my motion, that there be this, the proposal that's here with the stipulation that we're not asked for a pilot when the, any additional pilots with the ongoing, if you choose to finance, refinance, do anything in the future related to renovation.
I'll second it.
And that's, you're talking on this building?
This building.
It's been moved a second, Councilmember Schultz.
I think one of the overriding issues here has nothing to do with Montgomery Housing Partnership. It has to do with the fact that the city is going to be facing a Herculean task in the coming months, next spring, in trying to figure out how to balance a budget with even less revenues than we have had this year. I don't know that's going to be the case, but all the evidence that we hear from the state, which is facing a $1.5 billion shortfall, I think it is, in Montgomery County...
1.6.
1.6 billion, and Montgomery County's imagining it's going to be facing a $200 million shortfall. I just don't see how it's going to be possible that we're just somehow or another going to escape all these, all this sky falling, as Chicken Little would say. I mean, when I say "we," I mean the city of Tacoma Park. Now, and we had to make some staff reductions last year that's hurt our ability, our city's capacity to get work done. I know this has nothing to do with you, so I'm only speaking to everybody here besides yourself. And the fact is, is that if we're faced next May with setting a tax rate, and we've got no alternative, and I don't know this will be the case, but to raise it, I don't want constituents asking me, "Why are you raising the tax rates on our properties when you forgave taxes on somebody else's property, notwithstanding that you're a nonprofit?" Stuff like that. And so, that's a very large contextual reality that we're faced with. So I'm concerned that we simply cannot afford it. These properties on Maple Avenue are, have high assessed values, and they provide some vital property taxes for this, for this city. And when we start sort of giving these, this tax forgiveness for one property and then another one, I start to sort of feel like some of the most important properties that provide us income are kind of disappearing. It's like somebody was building, tearing down buildings and building tax-exempt churches or something. I'm also concerned, as Councilmember Josh Wright said, that, you know, what happens five years from now, after this initial financing phase that you're in? I look at, this is a building, I guess it was built in the 1960s, and you've described it as needing major repairs, and in a building this size, I just have to worry that, you know, there's going to be stuff when you get in there, and you start doing repairs, and fixing hot water pipes, and other infrastructure in the building, that you're going to find that the costs of renovation are higher than you had anticipated. And then, you know, we'll be looking at this, and sort of saying, well, we'll be having this conversation again, and saying, gosh, if we can't get some help from the city on this, we're going to lose our ability to help people here, and we may have to raise the rents, and people will lose their housing and all of that. I just, you know, it's one thing if it's a real small building on Flower Avenue where you can get a handle on things, but this is a big building, and I'm not sure, without doing a very thorough engineering study, which I gather you haven't had a chance to do, probably will do it at some point, that you may not understand what you're getting yourself into, and could blow your pro forma out of the water. So, just, you know, and I guess the final point I would make is that we're talking about a, what, a seven or eight million dollar project? Is that what we're talking about in terms of the purchase price? And how it comes down to, how it comes down to the fact that your pro forma doesn't work because there's a shortfall of about $40,000 to $50,000 in your cash flow out of this whole project? And I'm not accusing you of anything, but it just sort of seems like, and I know you've got these other funding sources, because you and I discussed them on the phone today, that have set their parameters, and you've gone as far with them as seems reasonable for you to be able to do, including an owner, a seller, take-back note. But how, sort of seems to come down to a project as massive as this, but doesn't cash flow, but for the, but for the fact of a city council, a city pilot, which is, it's a fairly modest amount of money, a very, very small amount of money, in terms of the overall project costs, and also in terms of the overall cash flows on a project this size. And it's just, it almost sounds as though that this project was built backwards on the assumption that there would be a pilot, and then you went out and got the financing that would get you up to this point. And I just hate to see us sort of being put into the position of being the bad guys here if we don't approve this thing. I'm sort of saying, well, see, but for you, we would have had all this nice affordable housing. And I feel bad about it, because we are facing, we are in really dire straits going forward here in this fiscal year, but even worse in the coming fiscal year. That's, I understand it's not your issue, but it's my issue, it's our issue up here, and some of the taxpayers here as well. So that's why I have real problems with going forward with this proposed pilot. That's all I wanted to say at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Snipper, you've been hanging in there.
All right.
I'll give you an opportunity to say something on this one.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me over there?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. A couple of observations. I support this project, but without the caveat that Josh wants to add, I do not support that piece. First of all, I think this is a really important building on Maple Avenue. I think after the renovation, it will be a much better building. I support this kind of renovation, in which you get the building functioning properly. As you know, I'm not happy with renovations that make the building really terrific. Tacoma Park does support affordable housing, and this is one model for doing that. It has, like all the other models for doing affordable housing. RosenCon, I'm happy to support MHP, in particular in this project. They have a lot of experience, both in Tacoma Park and elsewhere, doing these kinds of projects. I believe that of all of the builders, renovators that we have doing it, they probably have the best guess as to what these kind of things will, or are cost. I trust them on those kinds of estimates. And the other thing I have is a question. So there has been a substantial change in the financing with the proposed revised pilot, and I was wondering if Mr. Goldman could comment on what changes have been made in the project to reflect that.
Well, in terms of the, you know, 10 years versus five years, I think we just felt like, since this was a level, the term of the acquisition financing that that, you know, and obviously the comments we got back, if we could just, you know, keep it to that level, in light of the fact that it would go through a more substantial renovation after that. So that was sort of the impetus behind that. Obviously, you know, at the, you know, it's, ultimately, you know, the property really could use the 100%, and, you know, the numbers would be more comfortable. I mean, and the debt coverage would be a much more, a better level that the lender would, you know, feel better about. You know, cutting it in half cuts it, makes it very tight, and, you know, it leaves less room, margin for error. I mean, you get a snowstorm, you know, heavy snowstorms like we got last year, you know, your estimates are, you know, change. I mean, these estimates on, you know, for the budget is only as good as sort of our best guess, and so you need some room of margin, margin for error and change. So, you know, it's, you know, and then our feeling was, you know, we, I guess our feeling was, even though it's tighter, we could live with the 50%. And then after two years, our feeling was, well, let's try to factor in to this, you know, some, what the, what levels of savings we feel we can get from, from the savings and utilities. And again, that's, it's a risk for, it's a big risk for us, because it's, till we really get into it and stabilize it, we really, you know, don't have a firm sense of that, but this is our, you know, best estimation. And I guess our feeling was that, you know, in an effort to try to, you know, meet everybody, you know, partway here, that we could probably live with going down to 25% after that, once we stabilize it. So, I mean, that was some of the things that went into our thinking. It really isn't, you know, it's more of it's, you know, creates a tougher, I don't know that we made any specific changes, per se, in any of the operating budgets or anything else, it's just more that we decided, you know, that we needed to find some middle ground, and it's a tighter, much tighter, a deal, but, you know, so the risk is on us. And so, at the end of the day, if we don't meet it, it'll fall on MHP. I mean, I think that's really what it amounts to, I mean, so...
Great, thank you very much. I have no other comments, but I will vote in favor of this.
And just, since you said that, I want to make sure that you recognize that, at the moment anyway, what's on the table is Councilmember Wright's proposal that includes the additional caveat that wasn't in the revised proposal about additional pilots.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't more clear. In my initial comment, I said I do not support Josh's, Councilmember Wright's proposal, but I do support the original proposal.
Okay, but unless it's, unless what's on the table gets amended, that it'll be Councilmember Wright's proposal that's up for vote?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and I really just want to thank everyone here tonight. I especially thank you, Rob, for, you know, coming back to us with a tighter proposal, as you said. I think it's, it's critical that we do find the middle ground that's going to let us approve this, and I think that you've shown that you've really made the commitment to do that. You've come back to us with a, with a reasonable mid-ground, and I also thank my colleagues for their continued open-minded consideration of this. I know this has been a struggle, especially during the economic times that we're in right now, with the, you know, coming up on the budget season, we do have to be careful, more careful than we always are with our expenditures. And so, I thank Mr. Wright for his, for his motion, and I fully support that, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
I can't remember what my additional question is, so I'll remove it.
Okay. And I'll just add one additional thing. I appreciate the conversation that has gone on around this, and I have some of the same uneasiness as my colleagues about our ability to continue to do pilots while at the same time having other methods for trying to encourage and further affordable housing opportunities in the city through the other policies that we have in place, and the other programs that we have in place. I am struck, something that nobody has mentioned this evening, it's my sense that there, that the current owner could certainly come up with something other than what you have in this, in terms of a, looks like a interest-free $200,000 note that has a, what, a five-year balloon? My sense is that the current owner has made a good bit of income off this property, and it would seem that there's a little more give there that you could try and get from that individual, and that's one of the things that's just making this hard to do.
I mean, I will say, I don't know if this is clear, maybe it is, we got both a price reduction and a $250,000 loan. But, you know, like anything, we pushed as hard as we felt we could, or at some point we felt like...
I understand. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Sorry, ordinance?
Barry Howard, I just, I'm a project manager, and so I appreciate the comment about how the estimates for the project, or the project can only be as good as the estimates, and that's very important. So I find it interesting how there was such a differential between the 100% pilot, and then it came back a week later. So I appreciate Councilmember Clay's comments on that. I also appreciate Councilmember Schultz's comments about being tough economic times, and also the gentleman behind me here mentioned risk. So I feel as a taxpayer in Tacoma Park, offering the proposal as it is at this point, it involves me as a taxpayer, and I'm helping, I'm assuming some of the risks that MHP should be responsible for, so I'm not comfortable about that. And the thing that I'm concerned about, so if this goes forward with a majority vote from all of you up there on stage, is that we might forget that if we're, if the pilot is approved as it stands now, that it would be forgotten when this might come up in the future for some other kind of program. So you mentioned some other tax program for lower-income housing, or yet another pilot. So that would also be a concern, is that we wouldn't, that that might be lost in other issues. But the current financial situation is, I think, is very significant. But one thing that I have in concern, so this is my final thought, is that I haven't heard any discussion about what, what would be the cost or the benefits for not doing anything, or what would be the cost for not doing anything at all. So right now, it's kind of, MHP has got this position, well, you have to help us here, and otherwise we can't do this project, but I haven't heard anything other than... But I haven't heard anything other than, well, I haven't heard anything about, well, what would be the repercussions or ramifications of not doing this project? So, and I also appreciate, once again, Councilmember Schultz's position that, you know, it may not be fair to put this on the city, that, you know, that if it's voted down, that we don't support affordable housing here in Tacoma Park. So I don't think that's a fair corner to back the city into and its tax-paying citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I live at 7215 Cedar Avenue. Some years ago, when I moved to Tacoma Park, I lived in one of the high-rises on Maple Avenue. I won't say which one, but the building manager who was there at the time said that when she took over the property management some years before, she walked in, looked at the property, walked out in tears, didn't know how she was going to make the property whole. She said that there were very serious problems with the property, but they did manage to turn the property around. I'm not sure whether any of the programs, such as the one being discussed today, were involved in that. I would like to support the previous commenter with respect to the council considering, you know, what are the alternatives if this is voted down versus voted forward? As to how do you achieve the objective of making this property whole, making the property into something where people living in standard conditions? That's a very important point because, you know, my personal experience with one of these properties in my previous time here in Tacoma Park, just to consider, you know, if you vote yes or if you vote no, what is the pathway to get the property up to where the property should be? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, I see two more lights. Councilmember Clay.
I just want to say that I think that the cost of doing nothing, when you have a current landlord who, you know, doesn't have, you know, we don't have rental, proper rental permits, we, we have people who are living in the building, and the building has a lot of problems. We have big quality-of-life issues for people, we have the sort of, we have the utility cost issue that's been raised. But, you know, more than that, when a building fails, and a landlord has kind of squeezed everything they can out of it, you get, you get, I'm sorry, I don't know the address of the building where they had to take all the balconies off and it sat vacant for a long time.
7610.
Seven, so you get 7610. And in the, and because in the state of Maryland, there's not a lot of political will to do a condemnation of a single building or other things like that, you end up putting a lot of, of other kinds of public funds into a building. And that's part of the reason why, like, I kind of feel torn between, you know, there's a lot of different philosophical issues that go on, and as I said when I very first started, there would be a lot of reasons why people might vote for this, there might also be a lot of reasons why people might vote against it. But I think that's one of the risks that you weigh, is what happens when you get derelict buildings in this state and you don't have the will to take stronger actions. There's the will to provide, you know, more public funds to help with an organization like MHP that's willing to come in and make the purchases.
And I'll just add here to kind of follow on to that, that I can say in all honesty that I came in tonight thinking I would vote for no pilot. I became convinced that with the additional language as proposed by Councilmember Wright, that this was the right way to get this building into the hands of MHP and out of the hands of the current owner, and a way to avoid the continuing issues that there have been for years where utilities have been turned off or have been very close to being turned off, and really puts a lot of residents at risk. And I think that, given the current financial crisis that we all are dealing with, that has been talked about here some, that the most responsible way to go forward and to make sure that the building continues to be viable is the proposal that's on the table. Councilmember Wright?
Just want to make two comments. One is that I, when I was talking about amendment, I wasn't picturing that we're just saying it verbally that there wouldn't be future pilots on this building, but that it would specifically be written into the, to the resolution. And so I would think that we would have an item D under the where's that would say something like, "MHP will not request," and the city will not grant future pilots on this property at 76 Maple Avenue by MHP Incorporated or any of its affiliates. So Barry, just to, you know, to point out to you that we, of course, any future council could pass a different ordinance and revoke this ordinance and do something different, but it very much would put on the record that with this property, we were very specific about what we, the arrangement we were striking. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I think you're right, you don't know exactly what happens if we vote no. But the scenarios kind of could play out, I would think, in the following ways. The current property owner continues to manage the property, and people continue to live in incredibly bad conditions, the property continues to go downhill, we continue to fight with the property manager through the tools we have. So it's not like we haven't been fighting to try and get issues resolved in the building, to get them to file their proper rent, they're not called rolls, but certifications or licenses. And, you know, so that, that continues, that eventually the property could actually fall into foreclosure. My understanding is that the individual who owns the property now has a mortgage that resets or a balloon has to be refinanced within a relatively short timeframe, and if it falls into foreclosure, that sounds great, like someone could just buy it like that, but actually, that's not the case. We have another property that we're dealing with related to foreclosure over on New Hampshire Avenue. Oh, no, that's bankruptcy, sorry, but it's, can be a very messy process, and tenants can suffer a great deal, and it could end up costing the city more money in the long run. The other option is that some other, some other developer comes in and purchases the property, and is it a gentleman sort of like this developer or this owner where he continues to kind of milk the property and let it degrade? We don't know. Is it someone who has a different mentality and actually has capital invested to improve it? We're not sure. We know we have a deal on the table that solves the problem immediately in the short term, and with tax credit financing actually has the potential to improve the building significantly in the future. We won't be a party to subsidizing the building beyond what we've committed to here, so I think it's a, you know, it's a mitigate some risk that the building could get worse, and as Councilmember Clay pointed out, we could actually end up spending more money to try and rectify the problem later on down the road. So that's, it's not a perfect solution, but it's the trade-off that I would make, and also, given the fact of the conditions that people are living in, that just from a moral perspective, I can't, if I have the opportunity to rectify the problem, I can't in good conscience go to sleep at night not, not voting for that. That's me, I'm not saying everyone, I'm not saying the other councilmembers who vote against it are something, that's just my, that's my moral, that's my perspective, having...
Can we show our hands?
Worked in, you know, in pretty bad housing conditions as a community organizer in Harlem, and what that does to people, so.
Lights keep coming on. Councilmember Schultz.
I guess I have an additional question, and that is, is to say, ask, if this piece of your financing puzzle falls into place as you've requested it here tonight, does that basically provide you and your other lenders, the two entities that are providing the bulk of the financing for you, plus the seller, obviously, it goes without saying, is that, is that going to give everybody the satisfaction such that they can, you can go to closing on this sale? Because if it doesn't, then I would have some more hesitancies.
No, I mean, everything else is in place, I mean, this would be the final piece, and this, yes, so the answer's yes.
To what extent have, have you had a chance to sort of do, have you had any chance to do an engineering study and kind of, I mean, what's your comfort level on your, on your project renovation estimates during the five years of this financing?
Yeah, I mean, we've done a building needs assessment, we do that, and we do, we do our sort of due diligence, you know, in acquiring a property after we have it under contract. We send in a number of professionals to really look at all aspects of the building to get us, you know, certain comforts. Obviously, we're not tearing down walls, but we have, even, even here, we have looked a little behind the walls to kind of look at some of the pipes. We've had mechanical engineers kind of look at it, water specialists have kind of, because of this unique issue of the water, we've had, you know, environmental review, which we always do, and we also had building needs assessment done.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so I would thank you very much for your answers on that. I remain skeptical about the possibilities of five years from now, a different council remembering or honoring, even if they do remember, this decision that we might make here tonight about no more pilots. Almost sounds like a storybook. But I, you know, so I would be willing to, if it's the sentiment of the council, that this property is in such, that the residents of it are in such dire need, because I'm not familiar with the property, I've not been in it, and I'm not familiar with all the issues that the city has been fighting with the owner about. Others of you obviously have been familiar with it in the past. So I, you know, if that's, if that's the situation, and we can help people who otherwise are in a difficult position, the tenants, then I suppose maybe I could, you know, get behind it.
Councilmember Robinson, and I think I'm going to say that's the last one.
I'm trying to think of, who is the culprit here if this is 125-unit building and it just can't function in our town? There are plenty of other 125-unit apartment buildings that don't fall into terrible state like this one is, and we have a pretty good town, we have a nice place to live, and people want to live here. So what is it that creates, that makes this building go down to the point where MHP has to step in with their white, on their white horse with the flag waving and save us all from this terrible fate? And I haven't heard that analysis, but I suspect it's rent stabilization or some variant of that. So if that's true, I think it's incumbent on us to really look at what it is about our policies that force a building like this, a big building on a main street in our town, which we're very proud of, down into the gutter. I think we really owe it to ourselves to make that analysis, because I'm not going to vote for this kind of thing ad nauseam or ad infinitum. You're hearing me implying that I might vote for what's on the table, and that's true. There is another option for this, and that's let it go condo. And that's another form of housing which support, which would support...
Point or...
125 small, small owners, individual owners of housing, and that would be ostensibly affordable housing in its own way. So I think that's something that no one's talked about, which I think is also worth talking about. I don't like being the last person in the, in the train, the caboose on the train, and if you don't give us the $85,000 over five years, the whole thing, the $8 million will fall down through the toilet and we'll all be, you know, forever damned. I don't like that either. So there's a lot of things I don't like about it, and furthermore, I don't want it called a pilot anymore, because it's not a payment in lieu of taxes. It's a tax giveaway to you guys. You happen to be a nonprofit right now, but in five years, you will magically transform into a for-profit with a bunch of investors. So those are my comments.
Mayor, if I may, I'd just real quick like to say that in answer to Councilmember Schultz's question about, you know, what is the building like? It has been a problem and gone downhill over the past many years, to the point where residents have had to hike up and down the steps because of elevators not functioning frequently, the plumbing problems and leaks and things like that, that just continual and ongoing. It's become very, I'm not the judge to say unhealthy, but it's been certainly a low quality of life, and it needs to be addressed. I'm certainly thankful that MHP is presenting a plan for doing that, and I'm certainly glad that we can talk about a pilot where you're going to pay us in lieu of taxes a 75% amount. Thank you.
All those in favor of the resolution on the table, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Two ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a break now?
We've got a few more big things to...
Don't hate yourself.
Do, maybe if anybody needs to leave for a minute and come back, and we'll just keep going to try and get through the remaining regular meeting items before we take a short break. We have next a resolution adopting a flood mitigation plan. Who's the city manager who's in, Darrell? Did I hear it was moved?
I did say moved, yes.
Okay, and I heard a second, so it's on the table.
All right. In light of the time and the many items you have to discuss, I'll just open it up to any questions. We have been before you before to talk about this issue. We've had several community meetings. Just for a point of clarification, we were under the impression that it was, we were awaiting FEMA's final approval. They notified us that the council had to adopt NEMA's approved version before FEMA would approve it. So there was obviously a communication gap, and so that's why it's here before you and why there's been a time delay between when we last passed it on to the state and where we are here now. So this is an overarching review of flood hazards in the city, some general recommendations about directions the city could take in the future with appropriate funding to pass ordinances regarding building codes, to potentially do some mitigation projects, and also to further enhance the, the database that the state and federal government rely on to identify flood-prone areas, because we were identifying some discrepancies in the information that we have available for the city of Tacoma Park. So we'd like that information to be updated as well. Barring funding from the state or federal government, there won't be a lot of activity in this regard, but this was described to us when we first got the grant that originally started this, as the door opening for the, for the city to then pursue continual requests and funding in the future, that without this, as a starting point, you can't proceed. So this is our starting point into this issue.
And that kind of gets at my question, which is, on the fiscal impact statement, it says implementation will require significant funding, the city will continue to look for grants and other funding sources. Is the, is any of this funding required, or is it just, as available, do it?
Yes, as available, do it. The one requirement within the plan itself is for the original flood mitigation team that the city assembled to meet annually to review the flood mitigation plan, identify potential opportunities, and make decisions as to which steps they'd like to proceed, you know, go after for the next year.
And that's the responsibility of the city engineer to convene that group and make sure that that happens? And the, any potential funding is contingent on following through on things like that? Okay, thanks. Councilmember Wright?
So I just want to be clear, this doesn't like create any legal liability that we're acknowledging is a problem, and therefore we are obligated then to do something within a certain timeframe or open us up to lawsuits if someone is flooded, and they could say we didn't, we knew of the risk, we, and we have this plan, but we haven't taken action. There's no...
It's not my understanding of how this positions us, and in fact, some of what we've been able to do through this process is identify discrepancies in the state and federal government's identification of flood areas within our jurisdiction. And Montgomery County underwent a flood... evaluation criteria. So if anything, it sort of points out the discrepancies and the lack of information that we have available to make decisions.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is a first reading resolution proposing the annexation of Flower Avenue right-of-way between Southern Right-of-Way boundary of Piney Branch Road and the location at which the Tacoma Park boundary proceeds east at a line south of Division Street. And Suzanne Leblow has joined us, and you want to talk us through the process.
Before you are two resolutions related to, basically to start the process, to take time to analyze if a portion of the right-of-way of Flower Avenue should be annexed to the city of Tacoma Park. And there's very strict rules within the state code about how to do annexation. Before a number of things get started, the process needs to be initiated, and the way that it's initiated is that the item needs to be introduced by the council. The way that the council introduces items, in this case, is doing, approving a first reading of a two-reading resolution. The second reading would be the vote whether or not you would want to do the annexation. The first reading is what is before you, which is the resolution proposing the annexation of Flower Avenue right-of-way. The other resolution talks about kind of the requirements, your commitment to do the public notice requirements and the investigation of cost requirements, and all of the things that need to be done, so that you can then have information to make a decision when the second reading of the resolution comes forward. The situation, I guess I'd like to go over a few things. The area that we're talking about...
Just let me, real quick, before you go on to the other pieces.
Sure.
I just want to make sure that it's clear that in this case, in 99 percent of the time when we do a two-reading ordinance, we envision doing first reading and second reading, and that's it.
Correct.
And in this case, it's, the process is set up by state law so that we do the first one now to start the process, and then we know we're going to hold off for, at a minimum specified period of time before we would get to the second reading.
That's correct.
It's almost like this is the enabling piece for the process, and the other one is the decision.
What's that minimum, Tom?
Well, there's a whole series of timelines for giving public notice, setting a public here, adopting an annexation plan, holding a public hearing, and then making a decision. So there's a whole series of steps that are laid out in the, in the state law. The, if you are familiar with the county council's process, they do an introduction of a bill, and then they have action on the bill later. The first reading resolution in this case is your introduction of a bill.
So it's, so it's not like most of the other times when we do a first reading?
That's correct. It doesn't say that you're supportive of the annexation, it says you're supportive of going through and doing the study of the annexation.
Right, okay.
There's a couple of things that I just want to go over for those who may be watching, and I know there was at least one person here from Flower Avenue who had to just leave. The section of Flower Avenue from Piney Branch Road down to the midpoint of Wilkinson Hall is where the city line runs on Flower Avenue on the eastern edge of the roadway. So the western sidewalk and the two lanes of travel on Flower Avenue are within the city of Tacoma Park. And then the section between the roadway and the property lines in Silver Spring on the eastern side is unincorporated Montgomery County land. The, the section between Piney Branch and Carroll is State Highway, it's Maryland 787. And the proposal that is before us from State Highway Administration is that they're interested in having, in repaving the road. They'll either go ahead and repave it, they've, they've got the package ready to go to bid so that the work could be done in the spring, or they will allow the city of Tacoma Park to undertake renovation of the right-of-way into a green street and then pay us $696,000 in lieu of repaving the road. At the time that the, that that happens, the State Highway designation will be removed from the road, and the property would become the responsibility of the respective jurisdictions, City of Tacoma Park and unincorporated Montgomery County. For ease of doing a Green Street project and for leverage in encouraging Montgomery County to contribute to the Green Street project, annexation would help facilitate the whole process of construction permitting, and, and as I said, would give us the opportunity to talk to Montgomery County and encourage them to put some kind of contribution forth now, as opposed to in 2016 or later, when they have said that they would install a sidewalk on the eastern side of the road. The, one of the timing issues here has to do with, you know, what the state wants to do in terms of getting the road done. Like I said, they did have the, they have that plans to repave it as it is, but just repave it, ready to go. The, I think more important issue has to do with our discussions with Montgomery County, as the paper this morning kind of rubbed it in, how difficult the Montgomery County finances are, and they, you know, I think that their attention span is elsewhere and will soon be wholly into the cutting process, the budget cutting process. They already have out their county council committee schedule where they go through the current year budget cuts. I think we have an opportunity, if there seems to be an opportunity for annexation, to take advantage of the discussions I've already had with high levels in Montgomery County to get a contribution to the Green Street development process. One of the things I guess I'd like to mention is that the $696,000 would be within, kind of, under our control about how we would design a Green Street. So we could tell a contractor that that's, you know, you can design something up to $696,000 worth. You may also be aware that EPA has been very interested in looking forward to providing a grant that could do a number of Green Street improvements. Robert Gu in town is one of the persons who has been directed to us and which we're happy to always work with, to walk the site and see what could be done. But there's a variety of different steps that could be done in terms of developing a Green Street. All of this does require some investigation and, and a little bit of time. What the two resolutions in front of you do is allow us to start that process and do that investigation and report it back to you. If this were, if this process were followed as designated in this, in these two items, on January 3rd, I would come back to you with an annexation plan, which is a plan that would identify the costs of, that would be borne and by the city of Tacoma Park in the future, and how the city of Tacoma Park could pay for those costs. You would approve that annexation plan if you wished. What that annexation plan means is that the following month, or whenever you are to the point where you can vote on the second reading of the resolution of the annexation, if you decided to go forward with the annexation, you would be committed to paying for the cost to the city of maintaining that annexed area. The proposal here does give a February 7th public hearing date. We need to have 30 days at least between the time of an annexation plan and a public hearing, so that people are able to review the information and make substantive comments at a public hearing. I have lots of information, but I think that covers the main points.
Councilmember Wright?
So, as you know, I, I put out some comments about the assuming of maintenance by the city from Flower Avenue, and we talked about the decoupling the decision of the purchase, purchase, of the assumption of Flower Avenue from Route 410, which I, I agree with conceptually in the, in the broader sense that we're not trading one street for the other. However, I think that the State Highway Administration did make it clear, though, that when they assume maintenance of one area, that they, they do it in exchange for maintenance of another area. And so one of the things that I suggested was that when we put forth the Flower, whatever it is we put forth for Flower Avenue, I don't know if it's a resolution, if it's ultimately a legal document, then, you know, I don't know what it looks like, but that we get some notation from the State Highway that we are assuming maintenance of a section of road so that when we come back to them later to talk about the State Highway maintenance for 410 and that whole issue that we kind of have, you know, in essence, a credit for having assumed this maintenance of Flower Avenue, to do so in a way that doesn't stop us from moving forward with our plan. Does that make sense? I'm just babbling at this point. I'm tired.
It's not even ten yet.
It's not even ten, I'm already babbling. So...
Not even halfway.
Somewhere in the language that we put something in here, that the State Highway acknowledges that we're, at this point, assuming this maintenance without an exchange, but later. Bring it up again.
Because that became clear in the discussions with them on the 8th, that they have certain policies that they need to follow.
Right, and that this, this idea of an exchange, usually they do it as an exchange of roadway, but we'd like to talk to them about it as an exchange of maintenance and not as an exchange of the underlying roadway.
To be clear, we did hear from Neil Peterson when he spoke before the council, and then we confirmed it since then. The proposal in front of you is not coupled with 410. The proposal that originally been proposed by State Highway was to give us half of the money this fiscal year and half of the money in the second fiscal year as part of the agreement. If the other roadway is not involved in this discussion, it's simply that we would do the project, and at the end of the project, State Highway would pay us the $696,000. That's what's on the table. In terms of whatever documentation we might need for whatever deal we might need, I think there's a lot of flexibility.
Councilmember Robinson?
I heard what you were saying, Councilmember Clay, and I think I understood it, and I think what I understood is that we're taking over maintenance of one street, and I think you and I agree that, and maybe others on the council, I believe others on the council agree, that since a lot of non-local traffic runs through our town along 410, they, they have a responsibility to pay for some of that maintenance. State Highway has a responsibility to pay for some of that maintenance. So they're not having to pay for the maintenance on Flower in this approach, and then it would be nice to have them pay for some of the maintenance along 410, regardless of how we end up dealing with 410. And I support that notion. Are there, we have a big stormwater issue coming down the track at, toward us, from the state. Am I right?
From the feds.
From the feds. Would the Green Streets project go towards making some of the improvements that are anticipated, that we anticipate?
Yes, absolutely, and I know that in the other cities' information that I've looked at, Portland, Oregon in particular has this very strong Green Streets project, part of the reason that they do it is, is the benefits that they get out of meeting the various requirements. Green Streets are particularly useful because one of the huge problems that we have is water that just flows with contaminants with force into our streams, and you can see that whenever it rains, and you can look at Sligo Creek and how, what, how it turns into that.
And that relates back to what I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, where there's the potential coming up in phase two of the implementation of the Chesapeake Bay regulations that jurisdictions such as ours will be faced with having to come up with 20 percent retrofits. And gee, where do we do them? Because we're, you know, we're all built out, and you can't force private property owners to do them, so you're looking in public property to do them, or helping with incentives for private property. So this would be a large piece that could potentially address something like that 20 percent retrofit.
Okay, that's important. We heard at the MML monthly meeting in Gatorsburg last week that every jurisdiction is going to be faced with these kinds of 20 percent retrofits, and that the per capita amount is hard to get a handle on, but Montgomery County was anticipating in some form or another an $18 per head kind of retrofit cost, as I recall.
In addition to current costs.
In addition to current costs, which in our situation would be some $360,000 if I, let's see, somewhere in the $300,000 range, $18,000 times $18 is, do the math, somewhere above $300,000. And that's not to say that you can spend the money and that EPA will say, oh, you spent the money, you're done, because you have to back up any, any projects you do with a, with something that's clear, clearly beneficial in reducing stormwater, and, and you're right, I heard it the same way you're saying it, Mayor, that we need to capture water and hold it, or treat it, or clean it before it goes into our, into Sligo Creek or other natural watershed features. The last thing I want to say is, I'm glad we're talking about annexation because, and this isn't the right place, the right moment perhaps to talk about it, but there might be other areas that we want to annex or approach annexing, that are adjacent to our city, to our city boundaries. One of them might be the area north of Flower Avenue beyond just the city street itself. And I don't know if there's anything to be gained from going forward in this way with that in mind. I don't know if there's anything extra we need to do to explore the possibilities of that kind of annexation at this time. My question really is, is this an opportunity in any way to, to push that idea forward if we agreed to do that?
Well, one of the things that, if you would go forward to get this process started this evening, we have tentatively planned a fairly large article about the annexation process in the newsletter. If indeed this project would go forward and we would start to work with the neighbors on both sides of Flower Avenue on a Green Street project, then they would become very familiar with the concept of annexation.
Sure.
And hopefully, we would make a very nice impression that would, that would facilitate the process. I think, you know, annexation's a very difficult subject. It's a little bit hard to figure out, so this would be, this is a fairly simple step, just annexing right-of-way.
And this is just simple because it doesn't annex anyone's property, it just annexes the street itself, am I right?
Right, it's, it's, the annex is right-of-way, the difference between the street and the people's front yard, front yard properties is...
Okay, so it can include a sidewalk?
Well, the asphalt, over the right, over the roots, the south there right now.
Right-of-way is that area of the street and the adjacent parts of the street that, that the city controls and maintains, am I right?
Even though in many cases, people think of it as their property.
Right, it may, it may go 10 feet into someone's property.
Or, like in some areas on Eastern Avenue, 35 or 50 feet into their property.
Yes.
Right. If you look at the map, you can actually see the jagged line of the properties alongside the east side of Flower Avenue.
And so we're approaching people as well as the county, right, to ask them about annexing portions of their property and saying, well, this will now become right-of-way for Tacoma Park?
We're not in a position at this time, unless you give a very different direction, to approach people to annex their property. That takes a certain, there's a vote process, both of property value as well as number of, percentage of voters. It's a much more difficult process, and it has other kinds of timeframes associated with it, so...
This is, this is an annexation of right-of-way only?
This is an annexation of right-of-way only, and so it's on, it's a simpler annexation than if we annex real property.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
So I have lots of questions.
Sure.
First, in Resolution 210, number 210, not 210xax.
First, in Resolution 210, number 210, not 210XAX. The first thing it says is, whereas the council has introduced a proposal to annex the right-of-way of Flower Avenue, is there any reason we can't say, whereas the council is considering? Because I feel a little bit, I understand it sounds like that this is a process where we're just starting it, we have the right to say no later on, but it does sound a little bit like...
Well, that's why I put the second whereas in, which is stretching it frankly, for what the kind of pro forma resolution normally reads as, but that's why I put, whereas the council will consider the annexation plan, hear public testimony, evaluate pertinent information regarding proposal to annex the Flower Avenue right-of-way before acting on this resolution at second reading.
So, what, I don't understand, what proposal have we actually introduced then?
I propose, you, it's, you are introducing the annexation proposal by passing this at first reading.
The introduced proposal is this resolution?
It's a...
And this, and this is language that is dictated by the state?
It's the standard language, it was the language, I have my, actually, you know, this is my third set of annexation. When we did the Pinecrest and other related annexations in 95, we used identical language to this. That was a highly controversial annexation, many people did not want the council, and many council members did not want to proceed with that annexation, but they followed the same path of introducing the annexation, proposal to annex via this kind of resolution.
Because it does feel a little bit like I'm like pushing a boulder and it's starting to go down the hill, and, oh, it's just, yeah, you can vote later on to change your mind, but it does feel like getting in front of the boulder and stopping it later on is going to be like a bigger deal than just saying, eh, we decided we didn't really want to do this.
Yes, I understand that.
Is that true? Like, is it viewed like when we, if we're to ask for something like this, that it's generally thought that we're going to move forward and that voting to say yes in the future is somewhere between a pro forma and expecting?
As the mayor said at the beginning, this is, this is an unusual process for this council. In this case, the first reading is an introduction, the second reading is the vote on the annexation.
And I would say that in the...
I'd like to have a different way to title it, but this is the direction from City Council, from the City Attorney's Office, and it's the same process, that the same city attorneys followed in the annexations in 95 and 96.
And I would just say that in the, first, in that annexation process in 1995, the annexation proposal came from some people in the community, and the council was resistant to it, reluctantly went along, and there was a whole process laid out where it kind of happened, but it wasn't something that the people who voted on putting it on the table at this first reading thought was going to happen.
Okay. I'm not sure that helps me or gives me any more confidence.
It's very awkward.
That makes me a little more nervous, actually. So then, what's driving us voting on it now, right? So, there could, we could say, okay, there's a bunch of questions we want answered, at least I want answered before I really would think about seriously for annexation, and it sounds like some of those questions could be answered without going through this other pro, this other process, right? So, you know, I have questions about like, how do we deal with snow? So, we just, we have a sidewalk now in front of a property that is in the city of Tacoma Park, and by city code, someone's supposed to shovel that sidewalk.
That's right.
If someone doesn't do it, we write a ticket to that person, but they're not in the city, and then they're part of the county, and what's, how does that work? I mean, I'm not asking you to answer this question right now. I have a question about like, does it change our lane miles for the rebate with the county? Like, right now, Darrell may notice, do we get rebated for state highways that are in our, so, but then do, will we, do we get an extra mile of lane rebate?
Yes, yes.
And we will get higher user, higher highway user revenue if they ever come back.
If they ever come back. So, it'd be nice to have mapped out sort of like, well, what is that one mile worth? Because we're assuming some ongoing maintenance costs.
And that's actually part of the information that is to be provided in the annexation plan.
But we don't need any plan to get that information put...
No, but it, but the issue is the, is the timing of everything, the, there's very strict timelines about when notice is given, when this information comes forward, when the public hearing is, that kind of thing. If you want to postpone starting the process so that you could get the information before the process started, the difficulty, I think, is a political one, not, not something else, and that is that I think it will be much more difficult to have good conversations with Montgomery County towards what contribution they can make towards this, towards any improvements in this area. Montgomery County is quickly going to be wholly occupied by major budget cutting activities. If we have an opportunity to have those discussions in December, and it's clear that annexation is seriously being considered by the council, I think we have leverage to get in the door to have those conversations. I think that if, if it looks like it's not really going forward, there's many other things for them to spend their time on, and I don't think they would pay attention to this.
So, who at the county are we talking to about this? Like, who have we talked to so far at the county?
I've talked to people in the county executive's office and in the Department of Transportation.
But we haven't talked to any of our elected representatives?
Yes, we've had some discussions.
So, that's driving the, in your opinion, that's what's driving the timing, not the fact that we might have this relationship with the State Highway?
I think that's part of what's driving the timing, the other thing is that the, that the state does have a plan to move forward, and they could just go out and pave the road.
But the State Highway doesn't require us to do annexation for their part of the arrangement, right?
No. I mean, but, but the issue, I mean, they could go out and pave the road, then an opportunity for a green road.
No, no, but, but we could do a green street, we could do a green street for every part that we own that the county doesn't own, or we could actually engage in a discussion with the county to do the green street, and they own their part, and we own our, continue on our part.
We could do that. It's, it's a very difficult coordination to deal with different permitting, different stormwater rules, the, you know, contracting, even just having the conversations to get that agreement to move forward, I think is, would be quite a struggle. It's not impossible, but I think it could be a very difficult one. And the, and the county also would then not have anything that says, if we move forward and help on this at all, and facilitate this at all, we don't even, you know, then we still have to maintain it, you know?
Well, the county should maintain their property anyway, right? I mean, that's like...
Obviously, but in terms of, in terms of a carrot to get them to have the conversations and do the hard work to work jointly on the project, I mean, I think it's simply human nature when you're faced with these huge budget cuts and you've got other things to focus on, this would slip down some.
And is there any, there's no rebate difference for us if we own the sidewalk versus the road with the county? They're not going to give us any more money in an ongoing way because we own the sidewalk as opposed to this.
I don't know, there's, there's some...
Darrell seems, the expert seems to be shaking her head no.
Well, there's, I mean, there's, through the task force discussions, you know, we'd have to look at that, I don't think it would be a lot.
They're not going to put sidewalks on that side.
No, my, that wasn't my question, my question was...
I was thinking in terms of the highway user revenue fees, which is just paved lane miles, that was a right of way.
But in terms of tax duplication, there's a, there's a right-of-way payments, but I'm not sure that it makes a lot of difference with sidewalks.
And are we going to have to pay for any private property to do sidewalks on the other side?
We have no idea, and generally, what is done is, if there's a place where it needs to cross private property, you have easements, arrangements, but that's part of the whole discussion with the community. I mean, I think in some, one of the things that you'll find when you look at the map is that some of the line is really close to the edge of the pavement and some, you know, is set back a long way, so it's going to be an interesting puzzle.
So, do we, but do we, in this process, would we actually find out the answer to that question, or will we not know the answer to the question?
We won't know, we won't perhaps know the full answer to that question, but one of the things that we have to do is have a survey of this area, which would be needed if you would move forward and decide to vote for an annexation at the second reading. You need to have a little description.
A meets and bounds survey?
That's correct.
So, we would then know the answer at that point?
And we would know a lot of information, but until the concept plan were finished, you know, part of it is just the way we work with any neighborhood, you know, gee, there's a tree here, so it makes more sense to put the sidewalk more into somebody's land, and, you know, and you have that conversation with them, is that how they want to handle it, and that kind of thing. But obviously, there'd be a budget for the project, and some, you know, you'd have to have a discussion about should some of the money from that budget go to something like that, if it ever occurred.
And do we, do we have any idea what the ongoing costs are for, what it would cost once you put the sidewalk in, what the ongoing maintenance is?
We are now just in the position to start gathering that information, as we now have a sidewalk program and didn't before, so I think in the future, we'll be able to have fairly accurate information as to what sidewalk maintenance costs. I think for, for most of the city, we do sidewalk, we used to do sidewalk maintenance when we did road resurfacing, so every 20 to 30 years, we repaired any damaged sidewalks as part of our road reconstruction. That relative to the road reconstruction itself ends up being a fairly small portion if you're not including curb and gutter and just the sidewalk itself, it's not a overly expensive part of the overall operation, but we could take a look and come up with some of that, but I think we should anticipate that it would maintain on the same kind of cycle, 20-year cycle for sidewalk repairs.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
What is the life expectancy of a sidewalk?
Well, a lot of it depends on the conditions it's in and the, how well it was built and the location of it, whether there's drainage, ice, or water problems can substantially affect a sidewalk. I mean, there's some sidewalks that haven't moved and been in place for 50 years, and they're still adequate and performing, so it can really vary depending on the, you know, conditions around it and where it's located.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
And just to be clear, the rules for annexation of property, if people would actually pay taxes for the sidewalk in front of their house, are much more complex and harder. So, as Dan was saying, to annex the right-of-way seems relatively easy, but to get the people who are actually the owners of the property in front of the sidewalks to be people in Tacoma Park is actually quite difficult, and they would have to vote in affirmative to have their taxes go up by 50 percent, basically, is that?
Basically, they would, you would need 20 percent of the voters who are residents of the area that's to be annexed to basically sign a petition that says they want to come in, and you have to have 20 percent of the owners of property by value submit petitions to be annexed, for it to be considered by you. And then there's an opportunity for the county to demand a referendum, and there's, so there's various steps when people and your property is involved. One of the things I think you should, you know, remember is this stretch has a mixture of homes and apartment buildings and, and those kinds of things, and so, there may be a number of people that...
The apartment building owners would also get the benefit of getting rent control if they came into the city.
That's right.
Probably wouldn't be a fan of that.
And the, the process in 95 was that there were three differently defined areas set up, and each, and there was a referendum that was required because somebody, what was it, somebody on the county council, the council member from the law...
In Prince George's County.
In Prince George's County, which they were in at that point, said they should have to have a referendum, and so we had to have three different referendum votes for the three different areas to determine whether they were in fact in favor.
So, just to play devil's advocate with your approach of sort of like, maybe if we do this and we work nice, they might see the benefits of being, you know, they'd be happy about being in Tacoma Park. To me, it's exactly the opposite. They're basically going to, they're going to say, okay, you've done the annexation and built a nice sidewalk in front of my house? What's the benefit for me? Like, the work's already been done, like, what's the benefit for me, right? So, maybe that's a cynical view, but I don't really see that, I see the reverse happening. I think if you couple them together, maybe you, people would say, oh, there's a benefit here, I have to pay a little bit more, but I become part of the city, I get the sidewalk and additional services. Two last questions, and then a statement. So, could we use stormwater funds for part of the projects that's related to the, to the Green Street?
I'm not sure.
I would think depending on the project design, there would be components that could be identified, stormwater, stormwater components.
Besides stormwater, I think there's opportunities for where we do bump outs, speed camera monies, things that are safety...
Is that my second question around speed camera?
The, you know, and I think also, as I've mentioned, there's, this Chesapeake Bay grant money is something that is designed for something like this as well.
So, I'm very sensitive to the fact that Councilmember Ruben, Ruben Snipper shared with me that, you know, this is of importance to residents in his ward, and the street is in bad condition, and the green, the sidewalks are in bad condition, and I'd be totally supportive of making an arrangement with the, the State Highway where we take ownership of the street and we do, take the money and we repair the street and do the sidewalk and Green Street as much as possible on the areas we own, and then when the county plans to do their deal in 2016, they do that, or maybe they're willing to do it earlier and partner with us. That, to me, is like a no-brainer. I'm concerned about a lot of these other things, and voting for this without some of these, to me, seems critical questions get answered, and I understand the ideas that the process is that they get answered, but it just feels really much to me like that ball's rolling down the hill, and I've felt like this in previous situations, but it feels like I, you know, certain, and this is an intuitive feeling, like certain pieces of information are presented to me in certain ways so that I would want to vote in a certain way, and I just not...
Try not to do that.
I don't really feel that trustful of the, of the process, so my inclination is not to vote for this as it's constructed, because it feels to me like a boulder going downhill, and it's going to be very hard to get on the other side of the boulder, and it feels like there are other ways to get to the same solution, just like before we had the conversation with Neil, is that his first name?
Neil Peterson.
Peterson? It seemed like this was the only way to get the deal done, to repave the State Highway, and when we actually asked critical questions and actually had the real decision-maker and a knowledgeable person in front of us, a lot of other stuff came out, and it seems there's actually a couple of different approaches to skin that cat, and I feel like there, we could get this, the outcome we want, which is a Green Street with sidewalks on both sides of Flower Avenue, without using this approach to skin the cat, which exposes the city to ongoing maintenance costs and a fair bit of risk around a whole bunch of questions that could be answered here, so...
Councilmember Snipper, did you have questions?
Yeah, I guess I did have a couple of questions. I was very encouraged to hear that stormwater funds could be used for some of the stormwater activities, changes we'd want to make, as well as the possibility of accessing other sources for some of the Green Street changes, because I think that would make the project a lot more plausible. There has been some concern about the, what do we do, all we want to do for $700,000. So, it's nice to hear that there's some other possibilities for funds in case we need it. I did want to ask about, an issue that's come up a couple of times, and that if there's concern about should we stop the, you know, could we stop the process partway through it, and it seems... it, and it seems to me that 410 issue is a good example of when the city, when the council decided to stop the process and have it go in a different direction. Quite far along, we spent quite a few sessions discussing 410 annexation, and it seemed to me anyway, that we were about ready to vote for the, for it. And then at the last minute, you know, we stopped the process. I think that that is, that was plausible in the power of it as well. And then there was another concern, which had to do with the idea that benefits accrue to, for the city, either because they drive through our streets of those catastrophes, or because people on the side of, while we'll be getting a nice street. I do make the observation on this that Tacoma Park's a small town, and all of us, when we go anywhere, drive on other streets and used facilities and they were heard and elsewhere. And, you know, nobody asks us for our contribution there. And now it seems to me a kind of odd argument to pull up the, you know, put a wall or a toll gate or some other thing at the edge of the city. We're all surrounded by other jurisdictions on all of our sides, and, you know, if anyone's that, that, that's a bit of a puzzle to me. I really fully support going ahead with this annexation process, because I think that it's a great opportunity now to put together a nice package for improving this street, which has been kind of a eyesore and a problem. And we're only annexing a small number of feet on the edge of the, on the edge of the road, just to get a rest of it. And, and we'll have a nice pot of money to do some really good changes for a part of the city that frankly needs it. So for me, it seems that we have decoupled the swap issue with S H S H A. That's made it all easier to go forward, I think, for most folks, because 410 is now a whole separate process. I think that getting stormwater, getting credit for doing stormwater improvements will be a pretty handy thing to have, and for these reasons, I fully support going ahead with it.
Okay, and let me just follow up along that same vein. I'm comfortable going ahead with the process to investigate all this and come up with what I hope to be a set of comprehensive answers about what the possibilities are and what they aren't, what the costs are, and who, how, how we can potentially partner different funds, if necessary, to do what would be best. I think we can see our way through this process and the, either, either go with the annexation or not, if that seems to be where the, where the information is pointing us. And I think that the way to do this is pretty well laid out by state law, and we can follow this process and come to our decision. I've been through two of these. The first one was contentious. We weren't sure how we were gonna end up, and it involved getting cooperation and money from Montgomery County to fix up what had been Prince George's County infrastructure. And they provided some money in a way to do that. Part of it was grant, part of it was loan, with like a no-interest loan. And I think that the, talking about the, doing something where the street is in, the sidewalk is in the city and the properties aren't, it's, it's the reverse case of what we face on a long section of New Hampshire Avenue from the DC line to East West Highway, where Prince George's County extends and includes the sidewalk in front of all the businesses along there, and on Eastern Avenue where the District of Columbia owns the sidewalk and a good bit of yard in most cases for where people live there. And I think it's a fairly common thing that happens, particularly when you're a border community as we are. And so I'm comfortable moving forward with the process to gather the information and enable us to make a good decision. Other comments? Public comments on this resolution?
I'll be quick, considering it's late. Two quick comments. One is to bring to council's attention and city staff the Green Roads rating system. I would urge the council to choose whichever option allows the green road to be built, and specifically, you can visit greenroads.us. The city could get certified, this particular project, and that would be, I think, a benefit to the environmental credentials of the, the community. The second thing I would mention is I've lived in six different states, and I've never seen a place where these jurisdictional disputes are as difficult, yet every state has counties and cities and city and county roads running through them. So I would just urge you all to begin to solve some of these problems, because they affect us all as city residents, and not necessarily in a good way. Thanks.
Is this the one I can push up or down?
Yes, it is.
Who's saying the book pound?
Ooh, what power. I'm Lynn Bradley. I now live at 7305 Maple Avenue for 22 years, before the dozen or so years I've lived on Maple. I have lived, I've lived at 8112 Flower Avenue between Houston and Hudson, or Erie, whatever it was now, I can't remember. It's been 11 years. And Lynn, are you still there?
I sure am.
Because I really hate to, at least for this point in time, disagree with you, because I think we both have a great affection for my old neighborhood and your current neighborhood. But I would encourage you all to think more about the questions that Josh has raised before you vote on annexation, and I think the boulder rolling downhill is a good analogy, in part because depending upon how far you go in that process before you might decide not to annex, you would be embarrassed to pull back from that process. You talk about the political dynamics, and I don't know your name, ma'am.
Oh, I'm Suzanne Ludlow. I'm the deputy city manager.
Okay. So, you know, there's a whole lot of thing to consider in terms of the political overlay, which ultimately determines anything, you know, a lot about where money goes, what's annexed, and who gets to be listened to. The county has long ignored the other side of Flower Avenue. They've not had curbs, they've not had sidewalks there. Years ago, we got sidewalks in, a lot of it with CDBG grant money, as I recall. The curbs were repaired. I think the, I can't quite remember, I think the state highway repaved at the time. We tried to get the county to do the same on the curbs and the sidewalks at that time. They adamantly refused to. I don't know if they were more flush then or less flush. But I would say that, with due respect, that I would be less concerned about the county's budget-cutting process and more concerned about the city budget situation as you move forward, because, you know, at the end of the day, that's who's gonna pay for the repairs and so forth on Flower Avenue. I absolutely agree with you, Rubin, and with others who want these repairs. I think we support them. I think we need as a city to put more pressure on Montgomery County, and I'm not sure that annexation process or beginning that is the one that starts that kind of pressure. May I have one more minute?
Yep, you've got, you've got 30 seconds still.
Oh, that's, let's see, we didn't have lights when I was around here before. I think if you want to do green roads, you've got lots of roadways that you could start with this on, maybe even a shorter or less traveled section to see how it works. I don't know enough about the technology and some of the other financing and, and policy issues regarding this, but you have many opportunities and great support for that. I got 3 seconds, or does that start over again?
Just go ahead.
Thank you. So I would strongly encourage you not to take a vote to start the annexation process tonight. I think you have to think longer term than even the next couple of budget years, but where are we in 10 or 20 years? We had hoped when we did those sidewalks before on Flower Avenue, that we'd get to the point where the county would put in the sidewalks, and they never did. That pressure needs to be brought to bear now in a much more aggressive way. For one thing, and, and Rubin, I really feel about this, because, you know, I've had a lot of friends and neighbors across the street and flower when I lived there. And first of all, I think if the city votes to start the annexation process, even though you all and, and the rest of us who have heard this discussion know that that is just a starting thing and that you quote, could pull back from it, that's not the way it would be received, I think, in those other, in the neighborhood across the street. And so if you do ever want to annex, I don't think that's the way to start it. But those discussions even have to start earlier than you begin the official annexation process, because I think Josh is right. There are questions that you can ask, there's information you can get, you can start to build the pressure on Montgomery County to, you know, what, what can they do? And to organize the people in that other community, we used to have the Between the Creeks, which was one of the few neighborhood associations that had both Tacoma Park and unannexed neighborhoods in one neighborhood association. I don't know if they are still active. I don't think they are, are they? And that was how that, the sidewalks were done before, and how they did some of the asphalt curbs that they finally replaced. Some of those asphalt curbs were like falling right into Flower Avenue. But I think this is a real, you can talk about the boulder going downhill, I'll call about that old slippery slope. Tacoma Park residents always, and I never thought I'd be one of these tax people, you know, but we already pay a lot more taxes than the people across the road on Flower Avenue. And why should our taxpayers pick up all of the cost for annexing and then maintaining Flower Avenue and building the sidewalks over there? And as Josh has pointed out, we don't get any revenue from that effort. Now, maybe there's other mileage, you know, the highway mileage or whatever that is, but, you know, that's kind of a tricky thing to start. And I think that in terms of your own budget, you've got to look at where, how can we get these things done in all these neighborhoods, including Between the Creeks? And it doesn't necessarily have to be annexation. And it might be at some point, maybe even in the near future, that we should start talking about that, but also talk about how can we annex the properties that would bring in a little bit of revenue to pick up the cost of maintaining that road and taking care of, of that neighborhood to the extent we would take on that responsibility. So I would not encourage you to start the formal annexation process now. It's not gonna sound like a temporary, tentative, research-oriented kind of process to those who don't know better. And I think you have enough political clout that you can start, including with Elrich and Leventhal and some of those folks, and, and now citizens do not know about this in terms of putting pressure on the county executive or the county highway department. But I think the questions that Josh has raised, I really appreciate, there are many others, and I've talked long enough, but I would really encourage you not to do that. There is no, I hear the political analysis, I don't know enough about this to know whether that is accurate. I would suggest you need to think about the long haul and not just the short term in terms of what would happen in the next couple of years, because this was 25 years ago when we did those sidewalks before, and, you know, I didn't solve the problem of how you deal with the Montgomery County across the way, but I'm not sure that annexation is the way, and I don't think you should put that cost on the city taxpayers as a whole. It needs to be a partnership with Montgomery County and the state.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Robert Lanza, 7215 Cedar Avenue. I'd like to address some comments that Councilmember Robinson made and Councilmember Clay made at the beginning of the session concerning referencing 410 in this document. I think we had a discussion last time I was here with a couple of hundred people in the room about decoupling Flower Avenue and 410. Any suggestion to re-enter any reference to 410 in this document? We'll probably end up with another 200 people in here next week. I would suggest that this document make no reference whatsoever to any activities concerning 410 in this document. Only discuss operations concerning annexation of Flower Avenue. Second thing that I would like to point out is previous commenters, and also Suzanne Ludlow had mentioned that there was an article in the Washington Post today concerning the budget shortfall that Montgomery County is expecting in terms of $200 million. I'm suggesting that it may not be the case that the county is going to be receptive to Green Street proposal, or even a proposal to pave the sidewalks. I think that if we here initiate a process to conduct annexation, possible response by the county would be to strike the sidewalk project that is currently scheduled from 2016 from the county budget entirely and say to Tacoma Park, please pave this sidewalk, have a nice day. So I would suggest that we learn something concerning what Montgomery County's budget situation will be before going through this process and thinking that we're suggesting to Montgomery County that they no longer have responsibility for paving the sidewalk. I think that Josh's comments as to, you know, where that money would come from and who would pay for what is a more important piece of information than getting this particular, getting this particular resolution voted on today. Thank you.
And let me just say that, as far as I can see, there's no language in here about 410. And I don't think anybody wants, nobody's trying to couple them again. The idea was, as I heard it, that it was clear that we could decouple them, but that what state highway is always dealing with in turning over or taking on responsibilities for state highways is that there's a trade, and that was why it came on the table that way, and that I took it as a sense that, okay, we'll decouple it, but in some way, we'll give state highway the cover that they need for how they need to put it in their books, so that if there, there is a sense of even though they were decoupled, that's kind of mentioned. So I think that was the intent of the comment.
I understand that, but, you know, at the same time, the, and I was, I was here for the previous session, while I was discussing, I understand that the state highway administration has certain ways that they, they like to deal with, with transfers of roads, but in this particular case, if there's a suggestion that any action to annex Flower Avenue would depend upon some decision being made on 410, it would not sit well with-
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what, wasn't what we were saying.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that you, you might want to be careful about the language that you use in describing that, and even in communicating with, with people on Flower Avenue as you go through this process, is to, you know, no, there's no dependence of any particular decision, or even no decision whatsoever on 410.
Your, your point is well made, that even though we know what we intend, that's not necessarily the way it's heard.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other public comment? What's the council wish to do? You're moving it?
Yes. I'd like to move it.
You want to defer to him?
Yeah, I'll defer to him.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Any further council discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, and this is Resolution 2010 with no XX after it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Five to two. That passes. 59 minutes on that one. Next, we have a resolution providing for public hearing, publication, annexation plan, and public notice to certain state and county agencies in connection with the proposed annexation of Flower Avenue right-of-way adjoining the existing corporate area of the city of Tacoma Park. Does somebody like to move that one?
I'd like to move that one.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Council discussion? Public comment? Yes. Yes, Councilmember Sniffer.
I think, given the hour that we've gone ahead with the first air, or part of this air, we should go ahead with the second part.
Okay. Any other council comment?
I will say one thing. I don't like the idea that we put out a plan and then we have the public hearing afterwards, but...
The plan, if I can clarify what the plan is.
Yeah.
It used to be called an outline for extension of services. It's basically the information about what the costs would be involved in the annexation, so that people can consider what the financial impact would be to the city.
So when the hearing comes, there's information for people to comment on?
And for the various public agencies to comment on.
Any other council comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So I'm assuming that's six to one. And the final regular meeting agenda item, number seven, is a resolution authorizing city manager to sign a MOU, sorry, yeah, MOU regarding Tacoma Park and Branch Park.
Move the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Ray. Is there any council discussion? Is there any public discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Now we go to the consent agenda, and there's been a request to pull item B from the consent agenda. Any other requests? Okay, we'll take that one up after you, the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry, it's a roll call vote.
Yeah, good.
Well, if I can say quickly, call it all.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll now take up a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of police in-car mobile video system.
Would you like to move it?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments, Councilmember Ray?
Sorry, that was from a previous...
Oh, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. I just wonder if the chief could briefly describe, or his staff could describe what
They're in-car camera systems like we've used in the past. They mount into the car, they're a piece of hardware that mounts in and works through the computer system. It'll essentially record the majority of the officer's conduct when they act. There are certain triggers that turn the system on, they record traffic stops, interactions they have with the public when the system's triggered. Once that video is taken, when they come back into the station, it's wirelessly uploaded into a network, where it can be used as evidentiary purposes, review of the traffic stop. If someone makes a complaint against the officer's conduct, we can review the data, see exactly what happened on the stop.
And who does the review, and how long are they held?
It's all governed by the county policies. Anything that's not marked as evidence is held for 180 days and is deleted from the server. If it's marked as evidence or some other type of purpose that it's kept for, then it stays indefinitely. The officers, when they make the tapes, they will bookmark them as evidence or some other purpose. If there's a complaint made, myself or any of the other administrative officers can go back in and save that data that way as well.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And thank you for being here tonight.
We're glad there was an opportunity for you to do something rather than just sit and wait and do nothing.
Call the stakeout.
Councilmember Ray.
These are the cameras that we've been using previously in cars now since our policy decision, I guess, 18 months ago, or a year ago, or something like that.
The in-car camera systems, we have two types. We have Panasonic and custom. The custom is the oldest system, they were purchased probably, I think, at the end of '06, '07, and they actually use a disc or DVD to record the data. The officers have to bring it in, we catalog and store it. These are a newer style, they offload everything wirelessly, they just use flash memory inside of them. When the car comes in, it's wirelessly uploaded into the system, and so there's no maintenance by staff. We don't have to do anything with it takes. The county maintains the server, and it all goes right in.
But the concept that officers are being recorded at times during traffic stops, or being triggered by these systems, is from a policy perspective, it's not anything new, I just want to make sure the public...
No, it's a continuation.
And I have a question. The county provides the server.
Yes, it do.
And what's our memorandum or relationship with the county that facilitates that?
We have MOUs with the county concerning technology services, mostly with our mobile computing, almost all of our data. We share servers with the county, including our CAD system, our RMS system, packet writer report systems, so everything, we have a data MOU with them that concerns all of that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment? This is a single reading ordinance, so please call it all.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We will take a short break and go to our final item, which is the work session discussion of the comments on the Task Force on Environmental Action Report.
We are going to take that up at 10:45?
Eleven.
Well?
10:48.
What's your pleasure?
My pleasure would be that we table it until next week and do it all together, and I would ask if we could maybe start early and do the TFEA first? Could we start at 6:30 or 7?
All right, thank you. It's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Next week.
And you're bringing the cake?
I'll bring the cake. I brought cookies tonight.
I know.
Don't forget, Josh can't have chocolate.
Right. I brought him a Scotty tonight.
Oh, you're very nice.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mine would be.
Okay.
But, you know, this issue keeps getting pushed off to the later times, and you guys don't have any energy left for it, so I like Colleen's suggestion of doing it early, because more seriousness that way to the issue.
Right.
Okay, well, we will juggle the agenda. We thought we weren't going to need an agenda meeting tomorrow.
We could always have a meeting in December.
There are people who won't be around, including the city manager. What's your idea?